We're gonna go ahead and get started since it is 6 o'clock, or we could hold off until 7 o'clock. No. Alright. Welcome to the October 21st Regular City Council Meeting. I'm glad you're here out of that windy day. Well, I guess fall is officially here at this time, so would you call a row, please?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Cochran. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Hammer.
Here.
Councilmember Huckes.
Here.
Councilmember Meisner.
Here.
Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Troutman.
Here. Okay, thank you. Is Justin Banks here of Catalyst Church? Could do the invocation? I guess not. So let's rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Puerto Rico, one nation of honor, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We usually have, in the first few minutes of our council meetings, we have an open mic, and if you wish to go ahead and speak to council, there are pages we have you fill out. We'd like to just have your name and address and bring them up here to our city clerk, acting city clerk, is that what we should call you, acting city clerk? Denise?
That's right.
Okay, let's bring them, Denise, just bring them up here. Hi, welcome. Restrooms are off to the left. Oh, what? Yeah, right over here on the table. They look like this.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Never had that asked before, but yeah. Okay. Anyone else before I get started? George Small, would you approach the podium? I'd like to read a proclamation. For you? George, welcome. I'm gonna go ahead and read, there's a proclamation from Rotary International, and it reads as this way. Whereas Rotary is a global network of 1.2 million neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe; and whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world; and whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize the children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 9.9, 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating this disease; and whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than $1.9 billion and countless volunteer hours to protect more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries; and whereas Rotary is working to raise the additional 50 million per year, which will be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional 100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation; and whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and additional materials for health workers and parents; and whereas in addition Rotary has played a major role in decisions for donor governments to contribute more than 8 billion to the efforts; and whereas the Rotary Club of Canyon City and 3,000 Rotary members in more than 57 clubs throughout 5,470 in the southern two-thirds of Colorado sponsor service projects to address these critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Therefore, the City of Canyon City does hereby proclaim the 24th of October 2019 as World Polio Day in the city and encourage all citizens to join us and Rotary International in the fight for polio-free world. George, you'd like to introduce yourself and have a few comments for us?
Yes, I'm George Small. I'm a member of the Rotary Club of Canyon City, 2017-18 District Governor for the southern two-thirds of Colorado. And yes, this has been an ongoing effort. I would guess that if I were to poll the audience, there would be a high percentage of people who are, who know or have family members who have had polio, even though this is, the peak of this was in 1952, and the last case in the U.S. was 1979. But there is awareness that worldwide polio has not been eradicated. We're looking forward to the point when this will only be the second disease ever that would be eradicated. So there would, this year likely be less than 100 cases worldwide. Those two countries, those occur Afghanistan and Pakistan, which politically makes it difficult for volunteers to work. But when you take a look at the numbers you've read, when you're talking about an eradication day of a million children, that's pretty amazing in terms of logistics. So this is just to bring awareness to the fact that it's still there. Polio is only a plane ride away from, you know, maybe having a case in the United States. We know what has currently happened with measles and the fact that we have a lot of NOVAX or people that say that stuff, you know, creates other issues with kids. So I appreciate your reading this tonight, and it's just one of the activities of awareness that we will be doing to let people know that that fight goes on. So thank you.
Thank you, George, and thank you to Rotary for all the many things that you do for Canyon City. You're an organization that doesn't make a lot of noise, but does great things for our community. We really do appreciate that, and we enjoy your pavilion, that is the Rotary Pavilion at Centennial Park. So thank you so much. And I will have this put up on a regular form. We have proclamation, and I'll sign it, and we'll get it to your club, but thank you again.
Sure. And if I can give you an "Polio Now" pin?
Oh, sure. It says "End Polio Now." Great idea. Thank you. Okay, now we have several people that would like to talk. If you're anything, and I haven't looked at them yet, so however I got them is how we're gonna call them out. If you're going to talk about something that is on our agenda, we'll wait until you get to that portion of the program this evening. However, so, and I haven't looked at, but I will. And we have, you want a timer? You have three minutes. The green light will go on, then the yellow light, and the red light, and the red light is you're done. Okay? And again, if I see anything here that will be on the agenda, excuse me, we will move that to the, to that portion of the program. So the first one I have is George Story. Would you approach, George, and give us your name?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is George Story, and I have a pretty important speech to give to you tonight. I'll do it as quick as I can. There's a link between achieving your goals and number one, good nutrition, number two, a good education, and number three, good immunization. Good nutrition, good nutrition is equal to a good breakfast, a good lunch, and a good dinner. Good education is grammar school, middle school, high school, two-years college degree, four-year college degree. Number three, good immunization is flu vaccine, tetanus vaccine, shingles vaccine, pneumonia vaccine. And I have some people, a lot of these good people aren't still with us, but they have verified that this is the truth. Number one, Winston Churchill, John F. Kennedy, Robert Kennedy, Martin Luther King Jr., Mother Teresa, Pope Francis Benedict, and Donald J. Trump. And thanks for letting me speak, and everyone have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Story. I see on here there are, we're gonna talk about ordinance on camping and public property. We have an ordinance on that tonight, right?
Right.
So we're gonna hold off on that. Homeless in the park, homeless housing. Does that fit in anything we're gonna talk about this evening? Pardon?
Yeah, those might be related to the camping and the, on public property.
Or obstruction, either one.
Okay, well, then we're gonna hold off on those. I will put those aside, and we'll call you up at that time when it looks like they fit in there. The other one that's not on is Jack Portello. It's Fourth Street Construction of Road and Curb Gutter. Where's Jack? Come on up, Jack, and give us your name.
My name is Jack Portis. That's a nickname. My real name is George. I own the property at 812 South Fourth Street, where my, where my son lives. They put in the new road on Fourth Street, did a great job. They told us if we wanted to put in sewer and water lines while they were doing it, it would be cheaper, which we did. And they put in the new curb and gutter all the way down Fourth Street, from the top of the hill up there to my property, which is in the middle of the block, and stopped right in the middle of the block. I happen to have the lowest property on the block, and since they put all the curb and gutter in, if it rains and when it rained, the, everything now flows down the street and the curb and gutter right into my yard and floods my yard and my house's basement, which is gonna be a huge problem with mold and everything else. I got with Lancaster, and he met me down there, and the people were still there. They said, "What can we do about this?" And they said, "Well, we'll build a little berm along here," which they did that same day, and they hard-packed it with a roller. Just so happened that that night it rained. That was about a half-inch of rain that we got on about midnight. Went down there the next morning, and it was worse than before they packed it. I have all the pictures here to show it. And not only does it flood my yard, but my neighbors also and their garage. And it just, it can't, it can't be this way. I can't imagine why they would stop curb and gutter in the middle of the block. When I asked the man down there, just one of the workers, he said, "We ran out of money." Well, I'm sure when you turn in for bids, you don't say, "Just go as far until the money runs out." I think you kinda go, you know, "We need curb and gutter from here to there." I would like to show the council these pictures. They are in order.
Sure, bring them up.
But... Without talking to me, you probably won't understand, but this was after...
Okay, well, I'll take him. You go back to your mic. You're gonna run out of time. Okay?
Then this is their final, what they did, the last picture.
Okay, alright.
I also, I called Ms. Smith, and she said that she would send pictures to Lancaster. Well, he had already been there twice, so he knew what was going on. And she said she would call me and let me know what they were gonna do about the problem, but I've never heard nothing from either one of them. I left a message with her today, but was not, didn't get a thing back.
Okay. I'm gonna show this to the rest of the council. Go ahead, Ashley.
I was just gonna say, sorry, I haven't returned your phone call. I'm out of town today. I'm up in Denver. I've been at a convention all day on homelessness. But I did talk with Ryan a little bit about it, and Ryan, do you have a report to give about that?
Well, I know Adam was looking into it. I'll have to follow up and see what's, if there were any additional results of that, because at the time, he was, he was speaking with Mr. Portis. So we will have to look into it and see, obviously, the concerns have not been resolved here.
Okay. Ms. Gonzalez?
Well, I know, I know exactly the area you're talking about, and I was concerned also. We have curb and gutter to a certain area, and then it's open, and there's, it's like a rural highway, and then we're back to curb and gutter. So in the future, before we put out these bids, can we, can we look at maybe putting in more curb and gutter within our city, in the areas where it's heavily traveled? I understand that it costs more, and it takes away from the road repair, but it also increases the value of our roads.
Typically, you know, curb and gutter is done part of, you know, public improvements, districts or neighborhood improvement projects where they're, they're funded as part of a neighborhood improvement. I believe part of this funding actually came from the Safe Routes to School project, which is, you know, put in some of that curb and gutter to provide the sidewalks for the students.
Okay, so we didn't have it in our...
Yeah, I would have to go back and confirm all those details, but I believe that's, that's part of the reason why this, this wasn't elongated as far as the 2A project.
Okay, well, I think it would just help some of our flooding issues if we looked at that in the future.
Okay, we're gonna pass these around, and we'll pursue it. Okay? And Ms. Meisner?
Well, the only thing that I noticed that's coincidental is that the Safe School project included sidewalks, and I, and I noticed that the sidewalk happens to stop. The new sidewalk stops at the same point the curb does. So there may be some relevance. Doesn't mean it's right. Just tell me.
Okay. Alright, yeah, we'll pursue that, and you can get back to us in a week, 10 days. Okay?
At the end of the meeting.
What?
At the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting. No, but do get back to us. Let's talk. Go pursue.
Get back where?
Here, you can call me, or you can call Ryan. Ryan Stevens at City Hall. That gentleman right there. Okay. Okay, thanks for bringing that up. I have seen that myself and kinda wondered about what was going on there. Alright, so the other four, you are, will be involved in, I think, the discussion as it comes up during that period of time when we talk about it. So hang in there. We've got a long meeting. Any councilmembers, any, that's it. That's all we have, right? Do you? Okay. Any councilmembers have any comments or announcements they'd like to make at this time? Ms. Meisner?
I had the opportunity to spend my lovely Friday down here with Mr. Hammerick and Tammy, and we made, we interviewed 17 community organizations and did some recommendations that we will, that I forwarded to council for community funding.
Okay. And tomorrow, you have acquisitive look, no? Okay, then tomorrow evening we have Vision Committee meeting. We have the Golden Age and a couple other items on the agenda for tomorrow evening. And Vision Committee is, is an open meeting again where we have back-and-forth discussions on various items or organizations. This one tomorrow will be Golden Age, and what else?
Titles 16 and Annexation Process.
And Annexation Process. So if you'd like to hear about that, please come down at 6 o'clock, and we'll be here, hopefully, most of us, and we'll have that discussion. And they're all kind of open and free-ranging. If you have any questions or comments, we'd like to hear. So again, come on down. Then on Wednesday night, we have a meeting with the, was it Planning Commission?
That's correct.
And that will be for the type of zoning and how it would look for the River Corridor Plan. As you know, the city has acquired some property down on the, along the river, and we would like to have a discussion, an open discussion, on what we'd like to see there. And that will be starting here, 6 o'clock. Again, if you'd like to come in and see the plan and talk to us, it's open. We don't have any secret meetings. Just come on down. Okay? Anyone else? Alright, thank you. I was to have a, did I do the proclamation on the small business?
I did. Negative.
You have it.
I have it?
Have not.
Oh, there it is. Okay. I have no, I got a kind of a cold. I have another proclamation. The proclamation is for Small Business Saturday. This is November the 20th, 2019. Whereas the government of Canyon City, Colorado celebrates our local small business and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, or responsible for 64.9% of new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small business employs 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 94% of the consumers in the United States value the contribution small business make to their community. And whereas 96% of the consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to small, independent-owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried. And whereas 92% of the companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. And whereas 59% of the small business owners and Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas Canyon City, Colorado supports our local business that create jobs, produce our local econ, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Therefore, I, Preston Troutman, Mayor of Canyon City, have distinct honor of proclaiming November the 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday, and urge all residents to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. And I'm gonna sign that proclamation and send it out. So thank you. Thank you for listening. Okay. I'm running out of voice. Can I ask the city, the Acting City Administrator to review the consent agenda and the items thereon?
Yes, sir. Mayor and members of council, item 8A is approval of minutes for the regular city council meetings on June 3rd, July 1st, and October 7th, as well as the special city council meetings on June 3rd, June 18th through 21st, June 26th, July 8th, July 16th, August 29th, and the Vision Committee meetings on May 22nd, the General Government meeting on October 9th, and the General Government 2 Committee meeting on July 10th. And just want to point out while we're going through these that this is the last of the catch-up minutes that the city clerk has been working on, so all minutes going forward will be current minutes for you. Item 8B authorizes the appointment of City Councilmember John Hammerick as the Police Department's 911 Authority Board Representative. 8C awards bid $4919 Centennial Park Bridge Lighting to Territory Electric of Canyon City, not to exceed $57,699. 8D is a monthly budget summary, and 8E is receive-and-file a list of bills.
Okay. Are there any additions, corrections, or concerns on that from anyone?
I have one.
Ms. Gonzalez, go ahead.
On the minutes for October 7th, I was absent, but it's saying that I had an eye vote on Resolution 23, Series 2019.
What meeting was that, the 29th?
A resolution of the City of Canyon City authorizing a limited exception. It should be on, says OT subdivision, oh yeah, OT subdivision and development regulations.
You said Resolution 23?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Series 2019, yeah.
We will make that correction.
Any other concerns or corrections? Ms. Meisner?
Ryan, on the general expenditures, there were that budget recap. Item D, I guess.
Yep.
Page 19, no, page 5. Why is the school resource officer percentage so low?
I would imagine because, because of summer, we didn't have it allocated there? Because of summer break?
Well, we wouldn't allocate an expense if they weren't doing it during the summer.
Right. Well, we should be catching up over time. These are, you know, the percentages are equal, so it should come, catch up over time.
Okay. Notice capital outlay. When we go to page 6, for capital outlay for streets and engineering are both in the 90s. I realize, you know, that may be a particular purchase that they had planned early in the year, but I assume that's on schedule?
Well, again, the, are you talking about the percentages again?
Both. They relate to each other.
Yeah, so, you know, streets projects, you know, I think it was a couple months ago you were concerned because it was, it was zero or, you know, very low percentage. We just had all, a lot of the streets projects happen in August, so we're just now incurring some of those expenses here in this time period. So that's why we're up to 90% now. So it has to do more with the seasonality of the project work more so than anything else.
And does that also apply to the water projects, capital outlay?
Yes, sir.
At 99.9?
Yes.
We have our water expert here, but where do we feel like we're at in terms of overall water sales for the year? Is that gonna recover or not?
Bob, would you like?
Bob, do you wanna come up and?
Tammy's here as well. She's kinda couched down there. You can't see her. See, she did that.
Yeah, but Bob knows it all.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. I know we kinda talked about this a couple, last month, I believe it was. And, yeah, water revenues are lagging behind schedule a little bit. We should be here next week billing out our September usage. And so I'm hoping to get a little catch-up there. I know our September production month was strong than last year at this time. However, when you look back year-to-date at our, the production data, we're running about 7.5% behind where we were last year at this time. Of course, May was a very wet month for us, and I kinda can't help believe that kinda set the tone for it. Demand is down this year somewhat, and so I'm hoping that we finish out the year kind of looking at our average metered revenue coming in, which is probably puts it closer to maybe 5.8 million by the time it's said and done. As far as, I think we had 6.2 this year, and I don't think we're gonna make that.
Alright, thanks, Bob.
All right, thanks, Bob.
You bet.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hammerick?
Yeah, so just a question for Ryan or Tammy. But on the revenue side, the, one of our big numbers is sales and use taxes. Excuse me. Where a lot of our dollars come into the city from. And we're, and we're lagging on that revenue stream, sales and use tax. Or about, so August, essentially, September, October, November, December, four more months to go, and we're just a little over 50% on that. Or do we have some idea of what's going on? Or are we going to, is that likely to catch up or not likely to catch up?
Well, sales tax has been performing at or above budget. So I think, again, it's some of the seasonality of tourism and even the holiday season that comes up in November, December tend to be stronger months as well. You know, Tammy, is there anything you would add to that?
We're actually now slightly above what we projected for 2019 with our September numbers. The numbers you're looking at, I think, are through August. And through August, we were only about, I want to say, 3,200 above where we thought we would be. But now we're a little bit further ahead, so we're, we're tracking where we need to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions? Mr. Meisner?
On your cash dispersments, I see you've got a $6,000 FEDC, and it's labeled as an event sponsorship. But is that part of our funding?
No, it's, it's not. So there's, there was $5,000 for the Business Plan Competition, which was part of the Economic Development Budget. And then there's the event that's coming up in November where the state is bringing down the State Office of Economic Development. We're sponsoring $1,000 as part of that event as well.
Is it? Okay. With the exception of that one change that Ms. Gonzalez had come up with, I would ask for a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion that we approve. Let me get there. The consent agenda with the corrections on the October 7th City Council meeting for October 21st, 2019.
And the agenda?
And the agenda.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hammerick, thank you. Any questions on that motion and second? Thank you. Would you call a roll, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Troutman?
Do I get to vote, really?
No, you can't.
Do I get to vote?
Oh, well, yeah, sorry, I didn't remember you were. Councilmember Ashley Smith?
Hi. Thank you very much.
She's paying attention.
I finally got to vote and you took it away.
Yeah.
Just kidding, okay. Acting City Administrator, Mr. Stevens, you have comments at this time?
Yeah, I've provided a written reports, administrator report to council in the interest of time and knowing that we have a very busy agenda. I'm not going to go through it unless there are any specific questions. I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions of council to Mr. Stevens? Ms. Meisner?
Well, my only concern is item number four in regards to the charging stations. I just think we need to be a little careful about designating a particular spot, even though we've talked about this, without a decision from council or somebody about what we're going to do with that property.
Absolutely. I think, you know, the idea was to get, to speak with these different agencies and give them ideas of what we're looking at and make sure that we have something, you know, approval from their side as well that we could bring forward to council in the future.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think that number two should be recognized. That's kind of a big deal. Justin Stewart passed his Class A water treatment license.
Yes, he did.
Went to high school with him, so yay.
Yes. Mr. Hartson, would you care to approach again? I have a question. You're too large to hide in the back there.
That's right.
Would you just briefly tell us what, in the course of events, it's like a rank? What Justin had achieved?
Oh, the certification process?
Yes, please.
Sure. State requires that all water treatment plants be operated by certified operators. And so water plants are all classified either A, B, C, or D based upon the, how big they are, the treatment processes that they use, the population that they serve. Our facility is rated as a Class A, which is the largest. It's the highest level license. So basically, an individual goes through a testing process with the state to advance in the certifications. D, Class D license is the entry level. And then you actually, in order to be able to go sit for the next level, which is the Class C, you actually have to work two years on the job at a water treatment plant. And then you go to sit for the Class C exam, you pass it. You have to work another year at a water plant before you're allowed to go sit for the Class B. Once you've obtained that Class B license, then it's another year before you can go sit for the Class A. And so it's kind of, it's kind of like an apprenticeship program. It's four years, takes about four years to get from no license to that Class A as long as you don't really stumble along the way in the testing. And it's, you know, I would equate it to every bit of like an associate's degree. It's certainly not a four-year degree, but with the time requirement and the level of knowledge that our operators have to learn in order to understand the water treatment plant processes, and as well as in our distribution system, too. We have this same type of certification there. But, yeah. And so we typically hire individuals who don't have the licenses, and we bring them up through the, through the ranks because we found that it makes a much better water treatment plant operator for our needs. And so, yeah, congrats to Justin. Of course, we've got a lot of other great fellows who've come before Justin and gotten that. We've got some great candidates who are working their way up now. And, but it's quite the process. But well worth it because, you know, that, that level of knowledge that is needed because after all, I mean, we're, you know, we're taking care of the folks' drinking water here. So I'm sure they would want, you know, folks doing that who know what they're doing.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if any of you would like, I'm very proud of our water facility. If you have not toured that, please see if you couldn't, go ahead and tour it. You'll be impressed. To me, as always, I've seen it three times, I guess I've done that tour, and I'm amazed at what happens to water from the beginning till you get it. It is, it's, how does man figure that stuff out? I don't know. But it is really quite impressive. If you haven't seen it, please go look and see what your plant looks like and how well it's operated. And thank you again for all your men and women that give us good water. So, thank you, Dolly, thanks for doing that. Anyone else? Okay. So I'm going to go ahead at this point and open a public hearing. This is number 10. Public hearing consideration, the public hearing is now open. It's number 10, it's consideration of application for a hotel and restaurant license, liquor license for Nirvana, Nirvana, Nirvana?
Nirvana.
Nirvana Culinary Paradise. Ganesh Adikari is the applicant. This property is located at 413 Main Street, Canyon City. And I'd invite the city administrator to give us a staff report.
Actually, Denise is going to do the staff report for the liquor license.
Denise, it's passed to you.
Okay. Good evening. Ganesh Adikari has filed for an application for a new liquor license, hotel, restaurant for the Nirvana Culinary Paradise located at 413 Main Street. Notice of this public hearing was given by posting the location and through legal notice published in the Canyon City Daily Record. Applicant has submitted adequate number of signatures. Upon reviewing the application, it was determined that the appropriate state and city forms and fees have been submitted. The diagram on the, of the premises meets filing requirements. The applicant has possession of the premises through a lease. The applicant holds a current sales tax license.
Okay. Are you, have we butchered your name enough this evening? Would you like to go ahead and give us your name?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ganesh Adikari, and I'm opening an Indian restaurant named Kha. It's named, it names Nirvana Culinary Paradise.
Okay. At this time, are there any questions of council? Mr. Meisner?
I have a question. I have a question more for the attorney than I do for the gentleman at this point. With this new process, historically, we've had a series of questions that we would ask, but it looks like those questions have already been asked. So are we repeating those questions?
I mean, so some of those questions have already been asked. You can ask certain types of questions. I don't know if you were provided with a list of questions? No, not this time. Okay.
Are they required to have a copy of the liquor code in their establishment?
No.
Why do we ask that?
I don't know why you would ask that previously. That was in your previous line of questioning. We never could figure that one out.
Okay.
That's why we, that's one of the reasons why we've revised the questions, so. So at this point, just to kind of lay out, what you're looking at is whether or not the needs and desires of the neighborhood has been met. One mechanism by doing that is through that petition process. According to the staff report, I believe there are 143 signatures from inside the city of Canyon City. So what you're determining is, does that satisfy that needs and desires criteria in issuing a new liquor license?
Mr. Meisner?
Okay. I guess my, my one question would be as I, is, as I saw some remarks in here about training for your staff relative to dispensing liquor and making for sure that they're of the appropriate age. And you had indicated that all of your people have training from some previous businesses?
Yes, sir. We do have several locations in Colorado, and we are very much familiar with Colorado, I mean, the liquor license process and then the distribution and controlling. So we've been through, so, so, I mean, and we have a trained staff as well. So I think we're okay with this, with controlling and distribution.
Okay. Ms. Hockes?
Yeah, excuse me. Even though it's already been answered in that, on the form and that, I think for the public view outside that are listening and watching in, the main thing I want to ask you is, you realize that any violations with regard to underage liquor and stuff like that can cause you to lose your liquor license to that. So, you know, that's an important thing with regards to that. So we want to make sure that the public out there is aware, that you're aware of the facts that you are control of that establishment with regards to all the liquor laws that pertain to their establishment. And if some of those are done, you could receive a fine or even a suspension of your liquor license. Have you, are you aware of that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Frank. Anyone else?
I would just like to note for the record that it looks like the applicant has done a pretty good job of canvassing the area around where the license, where the hotel and restaurant will be located. And it's a pretty complete materials, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? If not, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion in a second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll try.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve the, correct me if I'm not doing this one right. The new liquor hotel, restaurant for Creative Currys LLC, DBA as Nirvana Culinary Paradise at 413 Main Street.
Second. Ms. Hockes, thank you. Any questions to that motion? None, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Mrs. Smith? We've got one on the phone.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith cannot vote for public hearing items.
Thank you.
That's it? Okay. Thank you, then, it's approved. Just a quick statement, we had revised, we used to have everybody that got a liquor license or renewed a liquor license or wanted a special license. We were, one time we had 12, and there was no need for it. So we revised that procedure. And so if you get a new liquor license, or if you've had a violation, that's the only time you would come to council. So prior to that, we just streamlined it so that we have less time approving what we're going to approve anyway, like for the Blossom Festival or whatever. So you just need to do that administratively here at Canyon City City Hall, and you're done unless you had a violation or you're brand-new. In this particular case, I think I'm right, and the new Nirvana was new, so that's why they're here, and we appreciate that, and thank you so much. Mr. Stevens?
I would just like to thank the, the business owners for choosing to open a business here in Canyon City and investing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gonzalez?
When do you plan to open?
Most likely first week or second week.
Great.
Okay.
We are actually planning to open in mid of October, but this, the works, contractors, I mean, small contractors, although it's all cosmetic, but it's a lot of work, and it was too much junk because it was closed for a long time, and it was, so everything cleaned up the next time. So hopefully, we are opening mid of November.
Okay.
That business.
Thank you. Welcome to Canyon City. Thank you. What are we doing?
What are we doing?
What? Okay. We're trying to conduct one meeting, George. Thank you. They're going to be open for business. So, thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number 11, the 2020 budget hearing. I'm going to open up a public hearing for that. Invite the, should we have Tammy do that, or do you want Ryan? Tammy, would you take it away? Thank you.
Okay, so this will be our hearing for our 2020 proposed budget. The 2020 overall budget is approximately 5.9% above the 2019 adopted budget. Our general government budget does include new positions. One of them is a videographer, which is estimated at $9,097. This does include all of the required taxes and insurances that we must have, like workers' comp. That is a PRN position, meaning that it's just going to be when we need it. For instance, this evening... For instance, this evening, that person is... Would be working covering this meeting versus our IT department. That position is currently filled by various employees throughout the city, and a lot of times, it's overtime. So, this will help with that. The other position is a grant writer. The position is full-time, benefits-eligible. The cost shown is all-inclusive, so that is wages and benefits. When we budget for a vacancy, we do assume that they will take family coverage on the insurance, so this cost is worst-case scenario.
Just let him finish.
The capital project that is shown is the fiber for the wireless network, and that will basically be to connect all of the city buildings with fiber. This is split between the general fund and also the water enterprise fund. In public safety, the large items include our capital equipment for marked and unmarked police vehicles, the Panasonic Toughbook, their mobile data terminals, and then the continuation of the Police Annex Building on Ohio. Public Works has quite a few different equipment and projects that they will be working on. The boiler replacement is scheduled for the museum. The fleet department is looking to have the refrigerant recovery machine, also to add an overhead garage door to the fleet shop, also in streets to replace a roller, and then engineering would like to replace their plotter. The capital projects includes the street reconstructive overlays. Essentially, that is our chip seal program, the ditch crossings, the sidewalk replacement program, and also downtown alleys, and then Macon Plaza. For the culture and recreation in general fund, we are looking to do a few more improvements at Centennial Park. That is part of the master plan, and then also finish the trestles for the Royal Gorge Park Trails.
Tammy, before you move on, with the Centennial Park, I just want to point out that that's no new additions. That's the removal and preparing to move the maintenance building. So, there's some cleanup work that needs to happen there first, and that... Because previously, we said there's no more Centennial Park work. That's one piece that we do need to start working towards.
Thank you, Ryan.
I'm right. I have a question on the pedestrian bridge and trestle repairs. That's additional stuff to be done in 2020, and what... Is that the one remaining trestle and the landing Alta Vista to expand that?
It is.
Is it something different?
No, that would be to finish the remaining trestle and the landing.
And then what exactly is going on with the Royal Gorge Campground Reconstruction Project? I thought we had finished with those 21 campgrounds. I was wondering if there's something more happening?
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, staff. I'm Rex Brady, Director of Parks. Basically, by the end of 2018... Or 19, we will be finished with the 21 new campsites at the gorge.
At the end of 2019?
End of this year, correct.
So, what is the $65,000 for the Royal Gorge Campground Reconstruction Project for 2020?
That is a new restroom facility that is... With the future expansion that we expect there, that facility will be necessary. We just have one there now.
Where is that facility going to be at?
In the campground area, at the East Ridge campground area.
And then the campground is bringing in revenue now, is that right?
It's not at the moment. It will be spring of 2020. We'll be ready to start charging admission for that. 2020.
Next year. Ms. Arches?
Forestry foreman and a forestry technician. I mean, just saying that you're going to have a forestry foreman doesn't satisfy me. What's going to be his position? What's going to be his involvement? What's going to be his duties with regards to that position? Same question with regard to the technician. This way, the people have an idea what these people are going to do that we're going to hire. I just don't like to hire people and not let people know, the public know, what those folks are going to do in those positions, because, you know, it's a substantial dollar amount that they're going to be getting. So, I think the public has the right to know what these folks will be doing, just in case they have a question that might fall into their category.
Rex, do you want to go ahead? I'm happy to.
Sure, go ahead.
So, in the 2019 budget, we had 220,000, 250,000 budgeted for forestry services, which was a contract with a company out of Colorado Springs to come up, you know, limited in number of times and actually take care of our trees, city-owned trees here in Canyon City. Instead of spending that tax money that's going towards a company in Colorado Springs, we can employ a couple of people here to do the same work for just about the same amount of money, actually a little bit less. So, it actually saves us money and actually improves the service and quality of what we can do locally.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate that, but that's why I'm saying, you know, that explanation lets people know what's going on, and they have a right to know.
Absolutely.
And I know the cost savings is what we're looking at. I'm glad we're able to make that and then get everything done that we still need to get done within those parameters that they have in their jobs.
Right, and the contractors only worked January through the end of March, and then they came back in October through the end of December. This way, we can have a forestry department on the ground every day of the year, making a difference. We've been kind of forced to take a worst-first-case scenario and go out, this tree has to come down immediately, and with the forestry crew, we can obviously take better care of the trees and keep them pruned like they should be and not have to depend on contractors to do all that work.
Thank you, Frank. Mr. Meisner?
So, what was our contracted cost in previous years?
In the beginning, in 2013, when the department was cut, I believe it was around three... I don't have those figures with me. I believe it was around 275, and kind of went down from there from 250, and I believe last year it was 175 or something like that. But it's steadily gone down.
Aren't they contracted for so many trees?
No, they're... No, they're actually contracted with removals by the girth of the tree. There's a certain price for that, and then the same with the pruning. Depends on the diameter of the tree, what it costs.
So, did we call them in to do general pruning?
Excuse me?
Did we call them in to do general pruning?
Yes, they have a pruning contract and a removal contract. I believe the pruning contract was 100,000 this year, and the removals was 110.
Can I jump in real quick? Because on this... Sorry, Jim.
Go ahead. Ms. Gonzalez?
Well, the city was doing some pruning last year.
The only thing that we did was actual emergency work, where a tree limb had broken, was hanging over the street, and we did do some low limbing, which is clearing sidewalks and vision clearance.
I don't have a sidewalk at my house, and I had city workers out there trimming trees.
Just low limbing?
Maybe.
Was there a stop sign? Because that's what we normally did.
No.
Was just low limb the trees, and then any vision clearance issues is what we took care of.
Okay.
So, for council's information, the line item that the contract was under is reduced by $162,000 by us adding the staffing. So, it is... We do have some savings.
And that money stays here in Canyon City?
And that money stays in Canyon City. That is correct.
Okay.
Right, and we've, of course, have all the equipment that we need, the high ranger and bucket trucks and all that stuff, so we reserved that equipment originally. In 2013, they wanted to get rid of it, so...
Okay.
Well, and kudos to Rex. I've seen him out there trimming myself, so, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meisner.
So, did we not add two parks people this year?
Just one, I believe.
In 2019?
Or one and a half.
About one and a half. Seasonal.
And then that's the 274.5 that we're talking about in terms of the line item?
Yes, that is the line item that that contract was budgeted in, and instead of being the 274.5, it will be budgeted at 112,000.
And the balance will go away?
The balance is just going back into the... Any excess that we have not spent over the reserves or the revenues go back into their reserves, so by cutting their costs, it helps build those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Rex?
I have some questions for Rex.
Hi, Ashley.
Rex, can you tell me some more about that pedestrian bridge and trestle repairs? Because I thought we had already budgeted what we needed through 2019. Wasn't expecting more costs into 2020.
We budgeted for... There's four trestles total on city property. We budgeted for three. This 2020 budget is to finish the fourth and final trestle and then do some expansion on Point Alta Vista itself.
Is that fourth trestle necessary to do? Can that be one that people can go under the trestle instead of over?
It could definitely be gone around, but it would be... You know, it would just finish the project up there to have all four of those trestle bridges decked and railed. Yeah, but it certainly could be, you know, delayed into the future if we wanted to do it that way, or we can either, you know, just... I think we got a pretty good price on it, really did, on that trestle bridge.
Well, and there's access right now, too. Well, Ty has it open. And so, for the Alta Vista itself, we... I mean, you already have it decked at the point, but there's... Is that additional decking, just that one spot where it was kind of left open historically to make it a bigger decking for special events? Or can you explain that more?
You're talking about Point Alta Vista?
Itself, yeah.
On the approach, it's really narrow. It's just the little train that went through there, so the approach itself on a bicycle or on foot is about three feet wide, which is real tight for a bicycle. We can take that and expand it out to where that approach is more than six feet, more than eight feet, actually, as you come into Point Alta Vista itself. But it was just a little narrow passage for that train, which, you know, you could certainly hit it with a bicycle pedal if you're not real careful, so that's just the expansion of that.
Okay, and where's this ADA playground and facility revisions being taking place?
The first one we'll probably do is Rudd Park.
Rudd Park, so they'll get some newer playground equipment?
No, it's actually just more handicap access to the playground area, basically sidewalks at this point.
Okay, and for the park fencing, is this the last year that we'll have to do fencing?
I certainly hope so. We've gotten all of the north... Just the contractors just recently turned from at the northwest corner, northeast corner, excuse me, of the property and are heading back south towards the river, and I think when we finish this budget year, we'll take a hard look at that and just see how it works. The country that the south line flows into is really, really steep, nasty country, and we'll just see if the cows will go up through there. If they don't, then we could probably curtail that project and call it complete. But the money that I put in the budget for 2020 is just additional fencing if we need it. We're hoping this year is going to solve our problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Meisner?
So, how much are we spending on the other trestles this year, our 2020?
Ryan, I believe the bid was less than 30,000?
I think it was more than 30. I think it was around 35, wasn't it?
Yeah, and that included the expansion of the Point Alta Vista.
Is that under contract services?
No, that is actually in the projects for general fund under the culture and recreation, and that is... Hold on one second.
Is that... Is that on... You're putting it under quality life?
No, that is under general fund, and it's under line item... It's on page 112 of your budget, 112 of your budget, and we have it budgeted right now at 50,000. We did not have the estimates in when we had prepared... When we had presented the proposed... When we had the original proposed budget ready, so there could be an adjustment there. It's shown under line item 10, 450, 590, 910.
Is that category not generally capital projects?
That is the culture and recreation capital projects.
And you consider that a capital project?
The repairs on it, yes, will be... Basically, we're going to be able to bring that into service, and then we will have it as a capital asset.
Okay.
Okay.
So, it was about 39,000 to do both.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, continue, Tammy.
Okay, as you've touched on the park improvement fund, we are looking to have a full... Two full-time positions added. One of them is the forestry foreman, and then one is a forestry technician. Again, those salaries are shown with salaries and benefits and all applicable taxes. There's also a part-time forestry technician, and that one is non-benefit eligible. That position would be less than six months out of the year, and would be responsible for basically our workers' comp and then any employment taxes. The capital projects include the Tunnel Drive Royal Gorge Park Trail Connection, the ADA Playground and Facility Renovations, and then the Royal Gorge Park fencing.
And if I understood correctly, the fencing is if needed?
Yes.
No, I understood that the other way. The fencing in '21 is what's questionable.
Was it '20 or '21, Rex?
20. It's questionable. I put that money in the budget just in case that the work that we'd finish in 2019 wasn't sufficient to keep the cattle out. We would then have to build more fence.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So, moving on to the Conservation Trust, the capital items that we are looking at include a pickup truck, a utility maintenance vehicle, and a commercial turf mower. The utility maintenance vehicle would be used up at the campground and be assigned to a camp host. The Royal Gorge Campground renovations include the restroom. The Quality of Life Fund, the project... The Quality of Life Fund, the projects that we are funding is a comprehensive plan. The CMAC projects, the Rudd House renovation, and then US-50 Highway 115 pedestrian improvements. The items that are in the Quality of Life Fund are primarily grant-funded and we do have some city match as well.
So the master planning is, is that grant-funded?
We will be applying for a grant from DOLA on that.
Yes, Mr. Meisner?
What are we planning to do with the CM, how do you ever say that? The paving of the dirt streets?
The CMAC?
Right, CMAC.
That was the...
What street are we going to do?
That was the Bridge, Bridge Street area?
The one we've been talking about for two years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so we've already decided that this is just the funding going in the budget.
Which, but for two years, right? Because we saved this year, didn't we?
This is the last year of funding.
Right, we did not, as far as I know, we did not have any projects that we had done this year that we're doing it next year, but that is the last year of the funding. We only had a specific dollar amount and we will be using the rest of it next year. The Two Way Street Improvement Fund, basically, everything we do in that fund will be just street improvements and those will be based on what the council and the engineer, the city engineer have determined that need to happen in the order that they need to happen.
Mr. Meisner?
When are we going to see that list?
We got it.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the budget book, under Two Way Streets, towards the back.
Ninth Street was the priority.
Page 143.
I tried to get the Mayor's Street on there, but that didn't work.
That was one of the ones we had to cut.
I'm just kidding, I did not try to get the Mayor's Street on there. I'm buying, gee, it's quiet out there, isn't it? Okay, Meisner?
Well, I still fundamentally have a problem paving a street that nobody drives on with Two Way Funds. And I know we've been over this, but, and I respect the people that live on Meadows, but paving Meadows with Two Way Funds is crazy. I mean, take that money and do a block of Ninth Street.
We could, council can do that.
I mean, we're just paving a street that nobody drives on.
And it is a paved street that needs to be redone, so, you know, you're either taking it out of the general fund or you're taking it out of the Two Way Funds.
Okay. Go ahead, Tammy.
All right, moving on to the Water Fund. Currently, the budget is shown with a, with two new positions, one of them being a utility maintenance worker and then a customer service representative. The customer service representative would be located down at our Public Works Building to help out with the various items down there in the bulk water, bulk water station. Capital equipment includes pickup trucks, the bulk water loading station, that would be an additional bulk water station, a backhoe. The projects include the high-head pump station and low-head pump station and then the water main replacements, and a lot of those are tied in with the Two Way Projects.
Okay.
Is that customer service representative full-time then, or no?
Yes, that is full-time, benefits-eligible. And our family coverage is estimated over 20,000 a year for the city cost. So when you're looking at 58, when you're looking at 58,000, you can really see that that position is paid less than 38 because that all still, also includes our retirement plan and taxes.
So it takes a full-time employee to supervise the water distribution or whatever that station's called?
There's other duties that that position would do as well.
Could we have, Tammy, I hate you, Bob, come on up again, explain that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I tried to accomplish a few things here, Councilmember Meisner. First and foremost is, I've got one person right now who handles bulk water and that has presented some issues this year as far as accessibility for some customer service, mainly for individuals to go put payments on. Had an incredible year this year. The last three years at the bulk water station, we've seen nothing but increase in usage and consumption. And it, I mean, for example, had about 430 customer interactions throughout the year in 2018. So that's people coming in and needing to put money on their account. Now granted, in the wintertime, it's probably a little bit less per day than you see in the peak of the summer when more folks are using water. But I've got to have some backup for that position. Position's also going to help us start building a succession plan. I've got a very senior employee out there who only have one person that does that job and if I were to lose them today, we'd be in a serious lurch. And so I've got to have some trained backup there to help me out as well as, like I say, a very senior employee, tenured employee who is going to be wanting to probably move on here soon. So I need to have someone waiting in the wings, so to speak. The undertaking of using Cartograph, while it's going to be a great tool for us and stuff, there is a lot of behind-the-scenes maintenance, as in data updating, that's required as employees change, as our inventory comes in and prices change there. I don't have anyone right now, for example, other than what would be my water distribution supervisor to update that data. And I've got to have him busy doing much higher-level tasks with the budget as well as out in the field and planning projects. There are ancillary duties that this position will be doing, secretarial kind of things like that. But, yeah, I originally had this help several, a couple of years ago and previous administration decided I didn't need it and they pulled it.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Any other questions?
I don't think Mr. Meisner is convinced, or I answered his question.
I'm not, but I respect, I respect your opinion, your professional opinion.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, I guess we agree to disagree. We don't even have to agree, but we disagree.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Yep.
Tammy, go ahead.
Thanks, Bob.
For the Stormwater Fund, we have budgeted capital equipment for a sewer inspection camera and then just the various stormwater projects. Our Self-Insurance Fund, we're estimating that at the end of 2019, our reserves are going to be 436,618 dollars. The estimated reserves at the end of 2020 are slightly over half a million dollars. We really need to have reserves between 700 and 900,000 dollars. So in order to help with that, we are looking at a rate increase for 2020. We're adding additional plan options and those are shown in the appendix of this presentation. You do have those slides at the back to show what we're trying to do. And then we are increasing the deductibles, we're increasing co-pays and changing the prescription benefits. And you might ask why we're where we are. Part of it is because we had higher-than-anticipated claims for 2018 and then also for 2019, our claims continue to be high. The city is responsible for the first 100,000 of claims that are not covered by either deductible or co-pays for any employee that's in, employer-dependent that's in our plan. And so we're looking at trying to, you know, help offset that by changing the plan design, increasing the rates. And then also, you know, with us not having an increase in a couple of years in the plan that helped deplete some of those reserves.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I hate to go backwards, but can we go back to Stormwater Fund? On the capital outlay, I just, I just want to put this out there. Can you explain to us the large amount of difference?
Yes, in 2019 is when we receive, when we closed on our certificates of participation and we had budgeted 1.5 million in capital. Those projects, we anticipated that we were going to have to spend a certain percentage this year. We do not have to and so we have this, the bulk of it being spent next year. And with the timing and the way bids are coming in, and I think council will be discussing some of these items later on in the month as to what's happening with the projects, but, yeah, the majority of projects will be going on next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
We actually did have items that we did not fund in our capital. There was a pickup truck for our building department that was not funded. The interview equipment for the Police Sanics Building, we did not fund that separately. We asked that they try to get that rolled into their construction costs and also to see if there was additional grant funding available on that. The Main Street Downtown Improvements, that was not funded. Items that we actually funded below requests include the police vehicles. The police chief did look and he determined that there is a possibility, instead of doing four SUVs, we can do two SUVs and two sedans based on the needs of the fleet. So that also, that helped us reduce that request. The sidewalk replacement program was also reduced. Pedestrian bridges, when that request was first put in, it was put in over 100,000 and we've reduced it down to 50,000 because we did find out, we anticipated we could get it for below 50. And then downtown alleys, that was also, that was also changed.
Okay, could we, Mr. Meisner?
What kind of vehicles does the building department have now?
They have a pickup truck. The issue that they are having is that it is fine to use around town, but they do not trust it if they need to take it out of town. It is, I forgot how old, how old it is, it is over 10 years old. Mileage-wise, it isn't bad, it's just that they don't, mechanically, they don't trust it to go out of town.
And we have other vehicles that they can use if they're going out of town?
What are they going out of town for?
Trainings.
Okay, other vehicle.
Hurry up, go ahead.
You got Main Street Downtown Improvements, what is that?
It's the continuation of the bump outs, so...
Who approved that?
Well, it's not approved, it's been requested every year since...
By who?
The original ones were done. It was part of the, well, it gets requested by the engineering department as part of the, as part of the downtown strategic plan, continuation of that. That's, you know, we know council does not, you know, have an appetite for continuing that work at this time, so it was struck from the budget.
I do have one thing that I've gotten feedback on for downtown is that a lot of the vegetation and plants have died and need to be replanted for the landscaping. And the lights on the trees downtown that we installed are, most of them are broken again and need to be repaired.
Yeah, and we're looking at different solutions for the lights. One of the challenges that we had there was, you know, the trees have grown really fast and snapped some of the wires or animals have chewed through the wires and some of the timers seem to be disappearing. So we're looking for some other solutions.
Okay, Ms. Gonzalez?
Interview equipment for 1145 Ohio, has that stuff already been purchased?
No, that has not. They do need to have an interview room set up and they have to record that. We are hoping that they can possibly get that in their 200,000 dollars that they have budgeted for next year. If not, we're also seeing if they can request grant funding. This year, they did receive some post-funding for, I think it was their training equipment and so they're going to look to see if there's grants available to help with that as well.
So the training equipment has...
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Dolly.
So the training equipment has already been purchased?
Yes, training equipment was purchased this year. They did purchase tables and chairs and some other items for the training room at that facility.
Was there any technology that was purchased under that?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
On the Ohio Avenue with the 200,000 dollars, will there be other grant money to help with that renovation?
They are going to look into that. The police department is going to be checking into it to see if there is any funding available.
Will that renovation be completed in 2020 or are we looking at multiple-year budget?
It will likely be a multiple-year project still.
Okay, Tammy, go ahead.
Items that council still needs to consider are the water rate increases for the 2020 budget. We did present what the rates would look like with a 3% and what a 9% would look like. As you can see, a 3% increase is approximately $11.88 per year. A 9% is approximately $36.96 per year and that is residential inside-city limits based on 10,000 gallons a month. We just want to make sure that, that council, you know, everybody can see what those rating, rate increases are and we just wanted to, you know, inform the rest of council on that.
We're not voting on that tonight, though, right?
No, no, it is just something that, to consider.
We'll review, Mr. Hammack?
And the, the budget revenue statement is based on...
The budget revenue statement is, right now, we have it as the current rates.
So no increase?
No increase.
Okay, go ahead, Tammy.
The next slide you'll see talks about the non-residential inside-city limits. If we do the 3% increase, we are looking at an average bill of $35.48 and I didn't put what that annual increase was, sorry. And then for the 9%, it is $37.49. And for some reason, I didn't put what the increases were on that.
Okay.
The other fees that council will be needing to decide if we're going to do is our turn-on, our turn-off of water and our after-hours fees. We did go through and look at our additional fees to see if we were recovering our costs. And the fees that we have listed here show our cost recovery. And a lot of these fees are individuals that if you use it, you will be charged it. If not, you're not. So it doesn't essentially, there's a potential that it will not impact the majority of the community.
Mr. Meisner?
So if you're going to shut my water off, you're going to charge me to shut it off and charge me to turn it on? Am I understanding that correctly?
If it is shut off for non-payment, we do... If it is shut off for non-payment, we do charge basically penalties for that. And then also, we do charge, currently, we do charge for turning off water. Director Hartzman could probably answer whether or not we do courtesy turn on and offs for, let's say if you go on vacation, I'm not sure how that is handled.
Rob, go ahead.
Sure. The, the turn on and turn off fees are charged, as, as Tammy just mentioned, when we have like our snowbirds and those folks who want to leave, leave town for an extended period of time, want their water shut off in case while they're gone, a line were, were to rupture, won't have water running and stuff. We do courtesy turn ons, so during normal business hours, if, if you are working on your own plumbing and you need water turned off because you have to change the washers in your faucet, as long as during normal business hours, we've, we've done that as a courtesy for folks. Of course, we also try to, you know, educate them a little bit and, and, you know, encourage them to get their own shut off located somewhere in their plumbing system so they really don't have to call us to shut it off. Because in an emergency, you know, again, the, the meter stop that's in the meter pit belongs to the city water department. It's for our use, not the homeowners. And so, but yeah, for courtesy calls, we'll go out and turn it on and turn it back on for them as long as it's during normal business hours.
Okay, Mr. Meisner, did that solve your problem?
Well, kind of, I guess. So if my water shut off for lack of payment-
That's a different story.
I'm going to, I'm going to be $10 for shutting it off or $10 to turn it on? What are you going to charge me?
Fifty.
How much?
$50.
$50 to turn it off and $50 to turn it back on.
But if it's, if it's delinquent, I believe it's a $60 charge. There's an additional $10 fee on that.
I, I just ask you to consider that the individual that can't pay their water bill can't pay it to turn it back on and off at those rates, which is the same problem that other utilities have in terms of penalizing the people that are having a difficult time in their life. So I can't pay my water bill and now you're going to charge me a hundred bucks even turn it back on because you charged me to turn it off and I got to pay that fee, plus I got to pay the fee to turn it on?
And, and you're correct. I mean, there are some true hardship cases. From my experience, we typically have the same individuals time in and time out again. We've got a, several that it's, and it's not because they can't afford it, they just wait until the last minute to want to come in and pay it. So I, I mean, I understand what you're saying as far as it being a hardship already. If you're having trouble paying your water bill, you're going to get charged even more. I guess part of it is meant to be a, an incentive to pay your bill on time.
My electric bill or my water bill?
Your water bill.
So then I get my electric shut off?
Well-
I mean, that's the problem some people have, Bob.
Sure, I understand that. And, and I know that finance allows the folks to come in and as long as they can get the past due fees caught up, if your next bill is still not quite due yet, you know, we'll, we'll still turn the water back on for them. Is that your understanding, Tammy?
Yes. Basically, a customer needs to be 45 days delinquent before they are shut off.
Okay, I just ask you to be compassionate for the hardship, the people that are having a hardship. And I realize that that has to be done individually, but to arbitrarily have a policy that everybody that gets shut off is going to get charged the same and everybody that gets turned on is charged the same, there's no compassion in that. And there's other utilities that already operate under that philosophy and we don't want to be part of that.
Thank you.
Frank?
My question is on the testing of the water meters?
Yes, sir.
2019, we're 35 and we jump all the way to 135 for 2020?
Yes, the, the, the data for 2019 was established back in the early 2000s. It was kind of a, they figured an hour's worth of some guy's time at just his hourly rate, they, and, and $10 for a pickup truck, thinking it's going to take him an hour. Well, in reviewing this with my water distribution supervisor, for one of our meter technicians to go out there, remove the meter, put a jumper in, which keeps the folks in water, take that meter back to the shop, put it on the bench test, and our bench test, we have to run a series of flow rates through it, at three different flows into a known volume. And then to determine the accuracy of that meter, and then to take it back out, remove the jumper, put the meter back in, it's closer to two hours.
And I appreciate that. And the only reason why, it's like one of the questions I asked Res, that-
Transparency.
That gives the people out there an explanation, you know, to say why that's being done. And I understand all the stuff that's in there, so now they, you know, then they're aware that there's a lot involved and that's why the increase is such a steep increase.
A marked one, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you bet.
Thank you, Frank. Ms. Gonzalez, a couple things. If you want to make comments, if you don't wish to make a comment, you may take a break. Which would you like to have? That's a question.
Take a break?
Ms. Gonzalez, would you like to take a break at this time?
I would like to take a break.
Okay, we'll continue on then in your absence. Or not, okay? All right. Was it, go ahead.
Thank you.
Tammy, go ahead.
All right. Council will be presented with a memo in the next few weeks regarding the change in our shut off notice process. And so you will see a little asterisk noted next to the shut off notice fee. And with the change in process, we will not have to change that, the cost of that. So that was a way that we were, we were looking to help with that.
All right.
The other items for consideration are stormwater rates. Our rate study had shown that we should have had, we should have a nine percent increase every year. We do have options shown here. The first option is adding two FTEs and the, and the lease purchase of a VAC truck. The item, option B is that we follow the rate study. Option C is basically to do A and B together.
Okay. Go ahead.
The final item for consideration is whether or not the city should continue to pay the convenience fee for the use of credit cards by the community. Currently, if somebody makes a payment using their credit, their credit or debit card, the city pays a dollar fifty transaction fee. If it is for the courts, it is a percentage, I think it is 2.35 percent. And so that, that can vary. Council is seeing that that bill comes through at about over $3,000 a month. So we're looking at about a $36,000 savings if we pass the fees on to the consumer who's using it.
And-
We do-
Sorry, go ahead.
We do offer a way to pay your utility bill at no fee. We do offer automatic payment from your checking account. And that way, it doesn't cost the, the citizen and it doesn't cost the city. And so that's just an item for, for consideration.
Okay.
The changes that you will see between tonight and when we present the ordinance to adopt the budget will be in our personnel costs. We will be up, they will be updated to reflect changes made during open enrollment. So if employees either up their coverage or decrease it, those changes will be incorporated. We will also move forward any of the projects that started in 2019 that need to be continued into 2020. We will adjust the CRCA budget. We do have that figure now. When we had the initial budget, we had it in over $600,000. So we have that revised figure, so that will be made. And then it was also noticed that the Humane Society contract had not been accounted for, but it will be accounted for.
Okay. Tell us again what CRCA is. I know, but the people would like to know.
John.
John, Mr. Hammack?
Sure. CRCA stands for the Combined Regional Communications Authority. It was created about four years ago. Florence, Canyon City, the county, each had dispatch centers. And it was decided by intergovernmental agreement to combine those centers. And that's what CRCA represents, is the dispatch center, 9/11 center, where all of our emergency assistance calls go through, as well as the law enforcement call, calls for law enforcement purposes.
Okay, thank you. Tammy, do you want to continue or are you done?
The following items are the appendix. So if council does not have any questions regarding any items in the appendix and, or they would like me to cover any of those, I can. Otherwise, I do not have anything else for the public hearing.
Mr. Meisner?
I have some, I have some general questions, is that okay?
Sure.
So how much unused funds are you going to have in fiscal year 19 that's going to carry over to 20? Roughly?
Well, we do know that on 1145 Ohio, we had budgeted 200,000 for that. We will not be spending all of that. We are just looking at getting some of that awarded later, later this year. And so we, we have some of that. We also have wayfinding signs. Honestly, I don't have that number with me. I can get back to you on that.
Aside from those projects that are carryovers-
Yes.
Wayfinding, Ohio, I, I think there's some value in knowing how much money is unspent in fiscal year 19 that's going to get reallocated, right? If we don't-
Yeah, it goes back into the general fund.
Other than-
Or, or it, wherever the fund it was.
Some of those accounts that are building, like the ditch crossing hole that we talk about, right?
So the ditch crossings, we budget 200,000 a year for, and then let's, for 2019, I think we had budgeted 100,000 because in, I think, 2018, we were going to start a project late. And so that's, that one basically is not happening, so the whole 200,000 is going into, into 2020. So we have 100,000 savings from there that will be put into 2020. If council is okay with that, I can get you an estimated figure for the November 4th meeting of what is going to be carried forward.
Well, I think there's some value in just knowing how many dollars are outside of the current budget. It seems like we never talk about that figure, whether it's a dollar or whether it's 20 million.
Yes, I can provide that to council, but I'd like to actually prepare it and get it to you on, on the 4th.
Ms. Hammack?
Just a point of clarification, the, the issue with 100,000 in 2018 and 2019 that is now 200,000 was that, was that we were budgeting, council was budgeting 100,000 a year that was getting reallocated. It was not used, it was just put back. It was a earmark for stormwater improvements, the ditch crossing. And, and the issue with council was, is that council wanted to be saving that money, not reallocating it. It was not tied to a specifically engineered or proposed project, except just in general terms. And so it was council's desire to let that fund accumulate, and that's, that's what Mr. Meisner was referring to. We, there are, I think that, I'm not sure of another fund that we have that, that, that is doing that.
There is another fund, and that's another question. But that same concept, I'm understanding applies to the, to the MTDs. The MTD ex, ex, uh, expense that we have in there, we're not actually buying MTDs, right?
No, we are.
Why are we replacing brand new, brand new systems?
We have, for the police department, we actually have, I think it's 35 units, and we're trying to replace them on a five-year schedule. And so we're replacing about seven a year. So we're trying to get into a, basically a replacement program. So we're not hit with a huge expense every five years. We're trying to do them, you know, a few every, every year. And like I said, I think it's seven, seven for 2020.
Yeah, but I understood that we were going to build a fund for that. I mean, we're replacing brand new units, are we not?
No, we are replacing older units.
How can they be old? We just got them this year.
Those are, those were replacements as well, I think, because we, we had some previously, but we also had older, older units because they've had, they've had them in the police vehicles.
When did we install the first MTD?
Yeah, let, let me confirm some of those details for you.
Yeah, I have an impression that there were still a number of cars or units that needed the MTDs, but my, my biggest concern is a software incompatibility with those MDTs if they're actually being used to their capacity because of the older software at the dispatch center.
So I can, I can speak to that. The, the software used on the MTDs is, is a lot of off-the-shelf type, Microsoft type things. There are, there is, there is a tie-in with the software in the center, but the, it, the, the center software is not really, when, when we get a new MTD, the software is, comes with it. It, that's part of the purchase price. The older software that we have in the center is for the center itself, exists on servers. And the, we, and we see the, we, that data is transferred to the MDTs. They have updated software, but the center does not. And so that's, that's really the, kind of the, the software problem that we have with CRCA is that they do have a, an older version of software that is, is not very user-friendly, requires a lot of dispatcher time, they have to double entry, they have to double enter some of the calls that come in, which is, which it should be just a, a point and click type function, but they actually have to type it, certain things in twice with our current software. And so that's, that, that's where that is, I believe.
Okay, I think we need to move on. We need to discuss that. We will discuss it because apparently it's a concern.
Yeah, it's, I agree.
So any other questions that we can, can we move on, Ms. Gonzalez?
Are, are we wrapping up this?
We're getting real close.
Okay, I just have a question about-
The budget?
Huh?
Just go ahead.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant.
Okay.
So on the grant writer, back on general government, general fund, first page, third slide or whatever that is, that will be a position within the city that is seeking grants and writing for grants?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we needed that.
How much revenue do you expect them to generate?
I, I don't know that we have a number the first year. I think some of it is, you know, it, it's going to take some time to, to get into the grant cycles because, you know, and find, finding the grants that we want to apply for, but, you know, we're going to, we have several projects that we want them to hit right off the bat, including, you know, potentially the DOLA grant if we don't write that this year. You know, that's, that could be up to a $200,000 grant to assist with the comprehensive plan.
Anyway, what's the general measurement for grant writers in terms of the revenue generated versus expense? There's got to be a formula there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know of, of that off the top of my head, but I, I can do some research and get that over to you, see what some of the other communities are, are doing. We, when we, we built the job description and looked at, you know, funding and the cost of, of this position, I called around to other communities that have grant writers so I'm sure that we can get some of those measurements as well.
I, I personally think we're losing out on a lot of grant money because we don't have a professional grant- a professional grant writer that's seeking out the grants that will work for us, as well as constructing the letters and getting them out on time.
There are a lot of opportunities that we're missing.
Yeah.
Speaking of opportunities with grant writing, on the Macon Plaza, I see there's $100,000 set aside, and I just wanted to just kind of point out that it would be nice if that could be used potentially as a match, if we could get grant money to go with it. And also, we needed to get that, kind of, that feasibility or that vision plan for downtown, and we want to make sure that's in accordance with that. And I also had a question under economic development, Ryan. Some of the things that you had budgeted for economic development.
Okay.
And I would like to see if possible, one of those, kind of, those consumer studies about what residents, what they're spending on the pueblo in Colorado Springs, and the products and restaurants that they're going to, so that we can help support our local businesses in supplying those products, and also filling the gaps by recruiting the restaurants to show that there is a market for those things locally.
Sure, the leakage report?
Is there an opportunity for that? Yeah, the leakage report?
Yeah, there are several vendors that actually provide leakage reports at no additional cost. They provide them complimentary, and I can get one of those reports for you.
Isn't there some that are more in-depth, though, that could be better used for recruitment of businesses?
There are, you know, they're typically wraparound services that go along with the leakage report.
Okay.
Ms. Meisner?
And then I noticed...
Go ahead, finish up.
Oh, I was just saying, on the budget, each of the departments had 2020 major goals, and I was wondering if at a different time, we could go over some of those goals for our business plan for 2020, to make sure they are in accordance with our five-year plan and city council's?
Absolutely.
Priorities.
Yes.
Ms. Meisner?
Thank you.
What is the Macon Plaza project? I mean, what are you doing there?
When we had the meeting, I think it was in September, about Centennial Park, you know, talking about having some money left over in the Centennial Park project, there was discussion from council saying that, you know, possibly holding that money over for either the clock tower or Macon Plaza, that's the money, that's kind of the placeholder for those funds.
If I recall properly, council decided not to hold that money over. And it appears to me that we've gone back and added $100,000 into a budget with no project. I mean, what are you going to do at Macon Plaza?
I don't think council made an official decision on what to do with that $100,000. Right now, it's just on hold.
We decided not to allocate that money to Macon Plaza.
I...
No, not to Centennial Park. But there was, we made comments about what we'd like to see done with it, but there was no formal action taken.
Check the record.
Correct. I don't know that there was any formal action. It was at a committee meeting. And I think council had different visions. Each individual council member had different visions on what to do with money. So again, this is a placeholder for that money, for the budget, in the event that the council wants to do something next year.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and if we make a motion, what we're doing is just partially accepting this, subject to an authorization sometime coming out and modification thereof. Okay?
We're doing a motion?
I'm asking for a motion.
I don't think we...
No, no motion is necessary.
Okay. I didn't think so, because, but it says here in my sheet here, and heaven knows, I always follow what the clerk tells me to do. I just couldn't understand what that's all about. Let's do something here. I believe most, the four things that I have here we'd like to talk are talking about the camping and public property ordinance, the homelessness in the park. I would like your consent to move number 20 next. I think there's a lot of individuals here that would like to talk about that. And would that be okay if we do that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we could start at 18, because that all has to do with it. 18, 19, and 20.
18?
No, that...
That's a park ranger.
No, let's go ahead. If you want to do that. 19 deals with it, and 20. So why don't we go ahead and move next to 19, and that is a... This is the first, I'm going to go ahead and read it. It's in 19, since it sounds like I have consent, and so I'm doing it. Introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 24, Series 2019, entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Chapter 9.22 and Repealing Chapter 10.06 Concerning Obstruction of Public Places. Would Patrick or would the administrator want to do that?
Actually, we're going to bring up Acting Commander Steve Husky to present this.
I thought he was here to give me a parking ticket, but I guess we're okay with that. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In response to public complaints and property damage that has been occurring on city-owned properties, revision of the attached ordinance was requested and completed using input from city staff members in the parks and police departments. In addition, the prior version of the city's code concerning loitering, Chapter 10.6, contained provisions that could be challenged as unconstitutional. And the revised ordinance focuses enforcement on the act of obstructing certain public property from the free flow of pedestrian and vehicle traffic, rather than loitering, which is currently defined as standing idly or hanging around. The revision does add to the affirmative defenses to protect lawful activities on city-owned property. For the purposes of the ordinance, obstruct, the definition of obstruct shall mean to walk, stand, sit, lie, or place an object in such manners to hinder or slow progress, to retard progress, to make accomplishment of obtaining a goal slower or more difficult, or to impede another person or vehicle, or to require another person or a driver of a vehicle to take evasive action to avoid physical contact. Acts authorized as an excuse, exercise of one's constitutional right to picket, or legally protest, or acts authorized by permit issued by the city shall not constitute obstruction. What we're talking about here is streets and highways, sidewalks, any city trail or property, any hindering or impeding of the ability of the city staff to perform maintenance or similar actions on city property. Affirmative defenses for this would be a medical emergency, someone who's required to use a walker or a wheelchair, some type of transportation such as that, license permit or other authorization, parade, performance, rally, demonstration, or meeting or special event pursuant to a permit or license issued by the city. Sits upon any intended object for sitting furnished by the city or another public agency, or sits at or near a transit stop while waiting for public transportation. The ordinance cannot be enforced without having first been notified by a law enforcement officer that the conduct violates this section.
All right. Chief K. Husky, any questions of council? Mr. Meisner?
Maybe for the attorney, but I don't care who answers it. So item 2D of the ordinance, the last sentence, what is, what are you saying there? Or what are we saying?
So I'm sorry, what section?
Where are you at? Page two of the ordinance.
Oh, page two of the ordinance, I'm sorry.
Item 2 or Delta 1E, the last sentence.
Okay, so if you are sitting, you know, sometimes on sidewalks, there's like places for people to sit that the city would put out, not necessarily like a bench, but like some kind of maybe artwork that people can sit on, or something like that. So that's an affirmative defense, is you're sitting on something that's supplied by the city or other agency to sit on. That exception does not apply if the, if staff is trying to clean up the park or provide maintenance or something like that. That doesn't give you a reason to continue to sit on a bench if staff is painting it, or something like that.
So it's exempting that if they, if they're, if you go up to that section where they talk about maintenance?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have a question on that. This defense shall not apply to requests for access? Is that what the intent is there?
Well, no.
Request for access?
Well, yes, I guess that's the short way of saying it, but it's referring to those requests under that subsection D, because city staff is required to make a request for the individual to move. So once that request has been made, yes.
Any other questions, Austin? Mr. Meisner?
So, what kind of issues are we having with this? I mean, why are we doing this?
We have had some issues with other departments, and Rex, you might want to come up and talk about some of the issues you've had with parks, but, you know, there have been instances... Well, Rex, if you want to go ahead and...
Veterans Park, I think, is a prime example with the homeless population that we currently have residing in that area. They put all their belongings on the stage, plus theirselves, and we have to ask them to move their belongings and theirselves off the stage, so we can actually wash the stage and clean the stage. And that's the same with the restrooms and other facilities, and especially in Veterans Park. And...
And I have some, Rex, in your opinion, I have some comments to make, too.
Yeah, and, you know, we're talking people on the restroom floors that we need to clean. We have to ask those folks to move, and so it's become quite an issue. And like I say, especially in Veterans Park.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Smith?
I believe this ordinance is taken from the Grand Junction ordinance that they put together. Is that right, Catherine?
I'm sorry, Mayor Potem. Can you repeat that?
This ordinance, yeah, I'm sorry, this ordinance was from Grand Junction, based off of Grand Junction's. Is that right?
It's based off a case that came out of Grand Junction.
Grand Junction?
Grand Junction was party to a case where they attempted to enforce a previous ordinance they had regarding loitering, and that case went up to the District Court of Colorado. And so this ordinance is drafted to comply with that decision in that case.
Okay, so I am up here at a homeless training that we have a scholarship on, on programming and addressing homelessness, and I had an opportunity to talk to some of the folks from Grand Junction, as well as a community resource officer up in Grand Junction. And it also kind of comes from a conversation when I did a ride-along with our corresponders in Canyon City, and saying in order to help the homeless at Veterans Park and other parks is they needed more tools to use for enforcement to help them help themselves. And that's exactly what the community resource officer from Grand Junction said, that it's really, he never, for most of the people, it's just an opportunity to say, hey, you need to pick up your stuff and move, we need to do some maintenance. Right now, our home, our people, it doesn't matter if we can't distinguish it as being a homeless thing, just general population can say, you can't tell me to do that, it's not in the law. I can stay here and do what I want whenever I want, for however long I want. And this is a tool where they say, no, there is an ordinance, you need to pick up your stuff, you need to, you know, clean up this area, or mow the lawns, or whatever. And so it's a tool to help them, but it's also, for him in particular, he said it was important that most people comply very easily and happily and well, but there are a few, and it might be this particular population at Veterans Park, who don't comply very well. And they have some cases, and most of theirs have to do with people passed out on the sidewalks, where people are actually having to walk around them to get past the sidewalk. And I don't know if we're to that level, but if they end up getting 10 to 15 citations, they can use that as leverage to say, look, obviously, there's a really chronic problem here, and you're going to be going to the judge, and either you can choose for yourself to go into rehab, and we can drop all the charges, or you can go to the courts, and there's a good chance the judge is going to see this chronic behavior and order you to get the services that you need to address the root of this problem. And so that's kind of part of the purpose of this ordinance, or a way that it can be used to end up helping and benefiting the homeless themselves.
Mr. Hamrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's, so I'm looking ahead, skipping ahead a little bit to the next ordinance, number 25.
May I know, we're in a public hearing on this one?
But I, this is a specific question for this ordinance, but I'm going to refer to language out of the next ordinance.
Okay.
And in the next ordinance, we have, so Section 1D, it's on page two of number 25D, and it has a lot of language in there about how police officers should behave if someone is camping, and there appears to be a continuing problem or some other problem that's contributing. And my question is, should that language not be in this ordinance also?
We can certainly add it if you would like. There's no, I don't have any concerns with that. Let me throw this question out to you. If we did add that language to the, I'm sorry, I don't have my ordinance numbers memorized.
24.
Ordinance 24, the obstruction ordinance, would you prefer to see something where, you know, because in the camping, it says, you know, like, when possible, the officer should do this. Do you want to see language that provides, like, after several, I don't want to put a number on it, but after several contacts with the person or citations, this is what they do? Or would you rather see it kind of more as a, maybe an initial contact conversation?
So I think initial contact, you know, that's, that can happen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but repeated offenses under 24, I think that we need some language similar to what we have in 25, to help the police understand what's expected if there's a, if there's going to be repeated problems here, and so that's my suggestion.
Yes, we can add that.
And I think, and I think that is important, and that part of that is that those questions, you know, instead of a fine, you know, your first option is, let's talk about why are you there? What needs do you have? Let's get to the root of the problem. There's also, I don't know, Catherine, if it'd be good, under penalties, to talk about, you know, because we can give them fines, but they don't have money to pay fines. Would it be better to order case management? Some suggest order to get their ID. They need their ID in order to get some of the services that they could potentially need, you know, it's just some flexibility and options for that.
So I don't want to speak for the prosecutor and the municipal court judge, because neither are here, but I don't know if that's something we actually want to write into the ordinance. I think the judge and the prosecutor are going to take those things into consideration when they have a situation like this. When someone's been cited and they have no means to pay the fine, imposing the fine, you're right, makes no sense, and they're going to try to seek another solution, and so I, this won't sound new to you, but I always prefer to allow them to have that flexibility, rather than to write it into the law itself. I can certainly, and am more than willing to pass that on to both of them as, you know, something to keep in mind.
So what did we decide with, what did we decide with John? I'm not sure I understand. The paragraph D of the other ordinance, I think, makes sense in both applications, where you could run into an individual that's obstructing for maybe reasons beyond their control. And it seems like that verbiage should be...
And it seems like that verbiage should be not only in obstruction as well as in the camping.
Yes.
Okay. So...
What I think that means is...
Well, I think in some language to have that, that acknowledgement of finding out what the roots of the problem are and so we can, so they can find out what resources they can help provide or lead them to, because there, there's tons of resources to help them if...
Okay, that...
That's the, that's the point, is changing the behavior itself, not necessarily just getting people out of the way.
If that can be added by amendment to the ordinance that we have now, and then I can close the public hearing, ask for a motion, and you add it if that's your pleasure. The other thing that I would remind you totally out of this is I think council should have the authority to take a look at how the police department is going to enforce it. There should be some kind of technical order or something. Here's a rule, how are you going to enforce it? We then get to look at that enforcement issue. That might take some of the stuff and make it palatable to you. But I would ask for a motion if you, if your council wants to add that caption from the, from 20, then make the motion that way. Let's move on. So I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure you took any public comment. I'm not...
What?
I'm not, not sure if you took, offered any public comment.
Oh, I was going to do it the next one, because they're talking about camping and on public property.
Okay.
That's where the fourth thing here.
I just wanted to check.
Oh, thank you. So we will do that next, so I'd like to get to that. But if you want to make, someone wants to make a motion to be inclusive of that, that paragraph that you have, I'm going to close the public hearing and someone make that motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a, a motion that we, um, make the revision of ordinance 9.22.020, obstruction of public places, with adding the verbiage from ordinance 25, letter D.
That's correct.
I would second that.
Okay. Motion been made in second. Any discussion or clarification?
I just do have one comment, Mayor, and this is to apply to both 24 and 25, is that I think we need to, for both ordinances, we kind of need to measure where we're at right now and look for the specific improvements that we want to see that come out of these ordinances and measure and see if they are accomplishing what our intentions are and if, and be on the lookout if there's any unintended consequences from it as well.
And that would be part and parcel of what I think council should instruct the police department to do with how their, their enforcement criteria plan is going to be and with the information in there that we want some affirmative feedback as to whether this is working or how it's working or something in that nature. But that's in excess of what we're trying to pass here. Mr. Hammack?
And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm just picking up on that and trying to clarify, but essentially, if I understand you correctly, I, I believe you're asking for the police department for the enforcement of these two ordinances to provide us with a policy so that we can review it and hopefully the policy will have, uh, actual, uh, concrete measures that we can look at to see, um, you know, metrics that we can see what, so that we can judge how the program is working as Ms. Smith was suggesting. Do I, do I have that right?
Yes. What troubles me is when you put something in, like someone had mentioned repeated, their contact repeated times. What on earth does that mean? Twice, five, six? How is that going to be implemented by the police department? And we as council should see that. And so, so yeah, this, this will probably work, and we also want these steps taken to give us feedback to see if it is working. Okay?
We will work on some type of feedback system.
We do that on other things, so that would, this is important.
Yeah, and I imagine this will have, you know, some work with the co-responder and...
Sure.
Yep. And as well as the other program that we're, uh, asking for tonight, which is the Park Ranger Program.
And, right. That would incorporate all the things that we're trying to do to help people, and we're going to know how that's enforced. And I know you'll do that, you do great work. Okay, any other questions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Council member, Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to move on up in the public hearing on introduction. This is number 20.
I understood that motion was just the amendment. It wasn't to approve the...
No, the motion was to approve with the amendment.
Okay.
With the amendment, right. Number 20, I'm going to open a hearing on it as, as it goes. Introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance 25, series 2019, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Chapter 9.22 and Section 9.44.060 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Camping in Public Property, On Public Property and Use of the Structure Within Veterans Park." Uh, Mr., Officer Husky, would you like to, or Mr. Stevens? Would you like to?
Mr. Husky?
Thank you.
And similar to the obstructing, we've had several complaints of, uh, property damage on city-owned properties and, and public, uh, private properties. The revised ordinance focuses enforcement on the act of residing or temporarily dwelling in a place while conducting the activities of daily living or erecting a structure within a parkway, recreation area, park, or other city-owned property. In addition, use of the band, shell, and stage structure within Veterans Park is allowed only through the permitting process of the Parks Department. As in the previous ordinance, um, prior to any enforcement on the, the person needs to be warned that their conduct is a violation and get, give them the opportunity to comply So as far as what it means to reside or dwell includes without limitation, conducting such activities as eating, sleeping, or the storage of personal possessions. Part of this ordinance also requires that the officer attempt to ascertain whether the person is needing medical or human services assistance, which includes but is not limited to mental health treatment, drug or alcohol rehabilitation, or homeless services assistance, which can be accomplished through our co-responder unit. Cleanup of unauthorized campsites. Officers may remove and restore all unclaimed property, personal property found at an unauthorized camping site. At least 72 hours prior to the proposed cleanup date, the city will post a notice stating the date and time of the cleanup, and the post, uh, notice will be posted in the general vicinity of the personal property to be removed. In the event of the existence of a condition posing an imminent danger of damage or injury to loss of life, limb, property, or health, the city shall provide a notice of cleanup no more than 24 hours prior. Personal property removed from the illegal campsite shall be stored in a secure location and shall be held for a period of 30 days from the date the cleanup occurred. Within that 30 days, that property owner can come and reclaim their, um, their property from the Canyon City Police Department. If it's not claimed within 30 days, the unclaimed personal property will be disposed of by either discarding, recycling, or otherwise disposing of such items as determined by the chief of police.
Mr. Meisner?
Uh, so I'm understanding that if an individual is in violation of this, they're going to receive a verbal warning and then a written warning and then a citation.
They'll, they will be given a warning, either verbal or written, and then...
But item C says that you're not going to issue a citation unless you get a verbal warning, which is then, looks to me like it's followed up with a written request, and then you're cited.
That, I'm sorry, that's correct.
Is that not correct?
That's correct, sir.
I, I just have a problem with the verbal warning.
Okay.
In what fashion?
Um, it's one of those, uh, he said, she said things that I don't think we need to get involved in. It's like give them two ver, two written warnings and bang. But, you know, it's...
Well, for a lot of people, all it takes is can you, you know, you're in violation, can you please move or pick up your sleeping bags or take, and that's all it takes.
Okay, then you don't need a written warning in that case.
Well, yeah, that's what I was going to say is, but it, it could happen within an hour. So say you give a verbal warning, an hour later, they're still there, then the written warning can, can happen.
But how do you verify the verbal warning?
Well, okay, if it goes to trial, because that's the only time that's really going to come into question, if it goes to trial.
Right.
The judge is going to have to weigh whether he believes the officer...
Right.
Or the person. That's, that's his job.
I agree.
And if I may, when an officer does that verbal warning, um, we can ask that the dispatch center or the officer themselves can enter that into their call notes, that that specific person was born at that specific place and time, that they were given a verbal warning.
Are we not camered with everybody?
The body cams?
Yeah.
Yeah, body cams are, uh, active on all officers.
I, I guess I would be comfortable that, that if we had a police policy, that if we gave a verbal warning, that that camera would have to be activated?
Well, it should be activated when they're, when they're making contact with them.
Should be. I agree.
So again, that would be part of the policy and procedures that they will have to take from this to do, like the previous one. Mr. Hammack?
Thanks. I do have a question about the cleanup standard, uh, under number 2E, number 2, there on page two of the ordinance. It says, "The city shall provide a notice of cleanup no more than 24 hours prior to the proposed cleanup date." And so that means they could, you know, give a notice and five minutes later start cleaning up. Is that correct?
They have to give no more than 24 hours.
No more than 24 hours.
You're reading that correctly.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Meisner?
On page three, uh, section four, that last sentence, John, help me out here, where it says no permit, does that whole thing make sense?
Well, that's the way it's written now. I didn't change that part. So, no permit, which requires approval by city council, so I'm changing language a little bit, shall be valid unless such approval is obtained, and none shall be issued until such a prior approval is obtained. It's an excellent sentence. Would you like me to change that?
I guess part of my concern is, is we're talking about, uh...
So I, I think there's a provision of the code you're not seeing here. So the way that, this is a little off topic, but the way that this section is laid out, there are items that the city administrator can approve, but, and there's also certain things that council also has to say okay on, and I think that's what that's connected to. It's a section that's not in your ordinance. It's a different section in the, in that, in that chapter. And so I think that's what it's saying, that even if the city administrator can approve something, if it also requires council approval, the city administrator permit is not valid until council approval is given, given, sorry. But it could be written a lot better.
Yeah, but...
Go ahead.
All right. It seems like that, that, that we're talking about prior approval for 1, 3, 1, 2, 3, 8, and 10. Is that, or am I misreading that?
So if, okay, so there are certain items in that list that require also council approval in a different section that's not in this ordinance, okay?
Okay.
So if the city administrator has issued a permit which requires the approval of city council, it cannot be valid unless city council acts and approves the permit. So the administrator's action alone is not sufficient, and his approval and permission is not valid until council has given theirs. That's what that sentence is essentially saying in a very roundabout way. We can clean it up. I'm happy to clean it up. How about I clean it up?
Works for me.
Okay.
Okay. Let's go ahead and, unless council has something, I'd like to move on to the people that are here to like to talk.
Okay.
The first one on my li, thank you, Officer Husky.
Thanks.
And, um, Donald Floyd, or is Don, is Donald still here? Would you state your name and, uh, we'll put you on the clock.
I'm Donald Floyd. Uh, I'm here to speak on the ordinance about the camping. If you ask these people to move along, where do you expect them to move to? They're homeless, they have nowhere to go. So if you ask them to move along from down here, two hours later, they're on the other end of town, you ask them to move along, you give them the verbal warning here, so next two hours later is the ticket down the road, when you ask them to move along again, it's just, it's not going to fix the problem at hand, it's just going to cause more issues. I think we should have a place where the homeless could go during the day and get out of line of sight of the public and, and be able to use, have things to use like internet and computers to, to job search and, and, and things of these orders because, you know, homeless lives do matter, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Um, is it Robert Dewey? Dewey, I'm sorry, Bob, I...
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Uh, I'm Bob Dewey, and today I'm addressing you as a member of the Fremont County Homeless Coalition and also a board member of Loews and Fishes Ministries. I'm speaking against specifically ordinance 25, uh, series 219, concerning camping on public property. We at the Homeless Coalition have read the ordinance as presented, and, uh, several of these things have already been discussed, so I'll go through them very briefly. As it written, it provides for fines for those who already are penniless and absolutely unable to pay. There's no provision for community service in lieu of fines, and we should, we should actually think that should be part of the ordinance because our prosecutors and our judges only act upon what the ordinance says or doesn't say. Second, as Mr. Floyd just pointed out, doesn't solve the problem of where are the homeless supposed to go? Colorado Springs has developed a daycare center, been in existence for quite a while. Woodland Park, just north of us, has a public area for the homeless to use. In these two areas, the daycare center and the public area, they are able to get their daily counseling, have computer access to apply for employment and jobs, and get the resource assistance that we have here in Fremont County that they are required and need. You know, Canyon City actually needs a daycare center, not on the grand, grandiose area of what Canyon, what, uh, Colorado Springs has, but on a smaller version. I don't know if you're aware or not, we conducted a point-in-time survey count of the homeless just this past August. That survey showed that the, two out of three homeless have resided here in Fremont County for more than four years. So contrary to perception, our homeless population are actually our neighbors who have fallen on hard times. So if you would please consider these facts when you vote on these two ordinances, and again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, moving on. We're, we're not going to do that. Thank you. All right. We need to talk to Natasha. Is Natasha still here?
Yep.
And we also have Austin Litz. Is Austin still here?
Nope.
Nope? Okay, let's move on. And we've taken care of that. Um, have any more discussion? Mr. Meisner?
Well, I, I don't know where the rest of council is at, but I'm not believing that this ordinance is intended to fix our homeless issue. This ordinance is intended to address what's happening in our public parks. Those are somewhat separate but related items. Those are somewhat separate but related items. And then, the other question is directed at the city attorney. I thought previously we had talked about an ordinance or something that gave flexibility for prosecutors to do community service versus fines, didn't we do something a couple months ago?
We had discussed it in, I think it was a general government committee meeting, we actually have that on the list of ordinances for next meeting.
I thought we already passed it.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yeah, just like Mr. Meisner said, this is, nothing's gonna solve the homeless situation. Let's get that straight, okay? The homeless situation is gonna be here forever, just like the drug situation, we have people that are on drugs, I wish that would go away, it's gonna be here forever. Those things like that are things that we try to deal with in the best way that we can within our restraints that the city has with regards to passing ordinance and stuff like that. But, the reality is, we can't do everything that other towns are doing. We're not Woodland Park, we're not those other people, okay? We're Little Town Canyon City, but we aren't forgetting about them. So, when we look at our situation, look at our situation as Canyon City is functioning, don't throw in another town on us, okay? We don't have the resources and the means and the dollars that they have, right? You know, we're just going through our budget here and here, and we're having a hard time just getting our streets and our roads repaired. But, we're trying to do the best we can to resolve as much of the problems we have, and that's the purpose for these two ordinances. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Frank, Mr. Meisner?
Just to reiterate with what Frank is saying, I'm just guessing, I say guess, we just went through a community funding project in terms of funding some community agencies, and a, I'm gonna say at least 10,000 plus of that money was allocated towards agencies that are trying to assist people in need, and a lot of those people in need are the homeless people, but if you look at the community agency funding, you're gonna see a good portion of that money that went to agencies that are trying to help that segment of our society.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I might, I have a few comments to make as well. In response to Donald's about where are they gonna go, it is true, and we do need to really be aware, that if we really target and hit a park hard, like at Veterans Park, it is going to displace the homeless population. But with that said, we also need to approach it as a partnership in working together with all of the stakeholders, with the Homeless Coalition and all the other stakeholders in the city and the county that work with homelessness, that we're just not cleaning out a park, but we're really trying to get them to the services that they need collectively, that we're collectively looking for solutions, and this is just one part of it, because there's probably six different reasons why there's homeless at these parks, and there's gonna be probably six-plus different solutions to address it. And so, this is just one piece, and there's, the one side is kind of like the Goldilocks test that we need to look at, there's one side, soften those who are working directly with the homeless, you know, and make sure that we're not targeting the homeless, and that we're not, you know, they are humans, and we need to make sure we're addressing their needs. There's also the other hand that could be too hard, and we need to get that test where it's just right there in the middle, that's both logical and realistic. And for the day center, I mean, that is something we're really gonna have to look at, and I was talking to some folks up here about this ordinance, I thought this is a great opportunity to learn more. They said the day centers are good, you really need to make sure that they are being productive, and that they are getting their counseling, or doing their laundry, and taking showers, or, you know, doing things that are productive and helping them improve their life, you know, looking for jobs or getting training. But there's also an element of homelessness that do not want to be in that day center, because they're being watched over, and they have to abide by the rules, and they don't want to do that. It's a small population, but they're those bad apples that are making us have to create this ordinance in the first place. They don't want that accountability, they don't wanna be watched over, and they wanna be able to use their drugs. And so, that's kind of where this, and, you know, and sleep in the parks, and that's kind of where this ordinance is part of addressing that element there. And so, I just wanted to kind of cover that part, and that we are needing to still look at positives, alternatives as well, and that with this ordinance, it can't be kind of a test, and we can, yeah, we analyze it and look, see how things are going, and how they're working with the corresponders, the park rangers, modify, we can test and modify, and test and modify accordingly to the needs of the folks there. But I also wanted to point out, when it talks in the ordinance about every, like, everyday daily living, such as eating and sleeping, at Veterans Park, there's also things happening like bathing, the water fountains, if you look closely in the rocks, there's bars of soap tucked inside, so that's, they like it there, they've said that it's a good location because there's access to water, and things like that, and also, and I wanna ask Rex too, if they've been turning the electricity off, because it's also kind of environmental things of plugging in their hot plates for cooking and coffee makers and things like that, as part of that daily living. And I wanted to ask the attorney, it says that you can't do daily living like eating and sleeping, but you can take a nap and picnic, and how do you differentiate between the two, as far as enforcing this part of the law?
So, Mayor Protem, you know, it's gonna have to be, and partly, it's gonna have to be judgment call by the officers that are there. You know, there's a distinction between those kind of temporary activities of napping and picnicking, and the more permanent ones of, I mean, sleeping, or having a lot of your personal property, and that kind of activities. I mean, it's gonna be a judgment call, and part of it's gonna be, you know, making contact and having a conversation with the person or persons, and discussing, you know, what their plans are, and what they're doing, and that kind of thing, so, it's really hard to...
Or if they're wrapped up in a...
Sorry, go ahead.
A sleeping bag, or if they're wrapped up in a sleeping bag versus on a picnic blanket type of thing?
Yeah, I mean, those are some things. It's really hard to legislate the appropriate language to make a distinction between those activities and not miss something. And so, we left it open like that, so that it can be, you know, the basis for a conversation and a judgment call by the officers.
Okay.
And I think, one more thing I just wanted to point out, when we're looking at other alternatives and solutions, both when I did the ride-along with the corresponders, and in my conversation today with the Community Resource Officer from Dun Junction, they both talked about crime prevention through environmental design, and that there's a lot of ways that you can just change the design of the parks, or the benches, or the width of the sidewalks, or opportunities where folks may choose to sleep overnight in public places and change that environment, and that where it's not conducive to those behaviors, and that's just a really natural way to create better safety, and without having to have any enforcement, it's just no longer an ideal place to be sleeping overnight. And it's important to point out too, that part of these ordinances are also to protect the homeless themselves, they are our most vulnerable population, they say they're more victimized than any other population in the community, and sleeping on the rivers isn't good for them either. And Veterans Park, I've heard from those who work at the Visitors Center at Veterans Park, that they get six to seven calls a day to our parks in general, just to deal with homeless incidents, and there's fights breaking out at the stage over whose turf it is that day, or, you know, I wanna have my kid's birthday party here today, you need to move out, and so, there are a lot of bigger problems happening there that we need to really address, besides the drug use and the needles and all of that.
Okay, Mr. Meisner?
Just quickly, to council and to the audience, we roughly allocated, subject to council approval, roughly $45,000 in community funding, of that $45,000, $16,000 of that was directly related to addressing homeless-related issues in terms of laundry shelters and food. So, we're not trying to legislate our way out of the homeless situation, there's the other side that you're maybe not necessarily seeing in terms of allocating monies to agencies that are trying to make a difference.
Okay, I think we're running to the end of this, I think that you can go ahead, and I'm gonna close the public hearing. You have a choice, you can make a motion, you can vote it up and down, you can maybe decide you wanna refer to a general government meeting, because it just seems to me that there was a lot of discussion we didn't need here tonight, and maybe this should've come to a general government meeting, unless I missed one, I didn't see it. So, you know, I don't know if the discussions we were having here should've been here. I think it should've been a general government meeting, we should've, I've not seen this before.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I actually had asked if this could be moved to another time, because so many of the folks in our community that are really engaged in working with homelessness are up here in Denver at this learning session for Built for Zero, and I was told that the incidents are so serious, that in the general population are getting so frustrated with this issue, that they didn't want it to be a long and carried-out...
Okay.
...process.
I understand.
But I did say, between first reading, there may be some changes that need to be made by second reading, and we may wanna meet with some of those folks between that two-week period, to see if there's some compromises that need to be made.
We're at a point of making a motion. If you don't like it, vote it down. If you like it, vote it up. And if it's voted down, we'll bring it to a general government meeting. Even if you vote it up, we'll probably bring it to a general government meeting. We're gonna end this, we've ended the public hearing, and I'm gonna ask for a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Gonzalez.
I make a motion that we approve revision of ordinance 9.44060 on camping.
Okay, motion's been made, I have a second.
Can she modify that?
To allow for the change in the verbiage in section 4 that the attorney talked about?
Would you care to modify your motion, Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
So done?
We can do that.
Does everybody understand the modification?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made with modifications, I need a second. What are you gonna say?
The, I believe that a proper motion is to approve a bill for ordinance number 25, series 2019, because it deals with several sections, and you only quoted one.
I'm gonna second the motion that was made.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move...
I move.
So, what?
We...
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, I suggest if we approve it on first reading today, that we do seek an opportunity to sit down with members of the Homeless Coalition and make sure that, if we need any changes for second reading, that we can do that.
You can bring that to a general government meeting, or a vision committee if you so wish. What, Mr. Hammack?
Thank you, I, the, I move that we amend Councilwoman Gonzalez's ordinance to say that we are approving on first reading a bill for ordinance number 25, series of 2019.
So, we'll need an amendment, we'll need to have your amendment seconded before we go into the hard amendment, so, have you understood what Mr. Hammack said?
No, I need...
Would you repeat, Mr. Hammack, you're making a motion to...
Amend Councilwoman Gonzalez's motion to say that we are approving a bill for ordinance number 25, series of 2019, on first reading.
Yes.
The reason for that is because this bill covers several ordinances, and you didn't quote them all.
It only covers one ordinance, several sections, I think.
Several sections inside one ordinance. It's one ordinance, it's ordinance 25.
Ordinance 25.
So, hers is good?
Hers is good.
Okay.
Then I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Now then, made and seconded, any more discussion on that motion?
I second it.
It's been seconded, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez? Aye. Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Okay, well, no, we have one more, sorry.
What?
Public hearing?
Is it a public hearing?
We have to have...
No, it's not a public hearing, so...
Councilman, Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Okay.
He looks good, look, there's one.
All right. So, if you all wish to bring that to a general government meeting, a vision committee, you should, if you want to, that's totally up to you.
No, you're already on your reading schedule, so it'll come up for second reading, so if there's any changes, they need to be addressed during second.
I'm not talking about changes, if we wanna go ahead and have a discussion on maybe implementation of it or something else, we can do that. You're right, we can bring it, we have to bring it up for a second reading and a vote. Is Brandon still here, Brandon Miller? Okay, good, I guess. Thank you. All right, let's go on to number 13, finally, I guess we get to talk to Mr. Patrick.
12.
12. All right, let's go on to 12, this is, is this a public, it is a public hearing, I'm gonna open a public hearing, number 12 is introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance 22, series 2019, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Section 17.08.010(c) of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning the Definition of Trade and Repair Shops." I'm assuming, Patrick, you would take over.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we are hearing the matter of a special use review approval, or SRU, for the Canyon City Middle School at 1215 Main Street. The request is for approval to operate a school in an R2 medium-density residential zone district. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Main Street and North 12th Street. It exists as an assemblage of various lots over time, and therefore has no unified legal description. The property itself consists of 12.3 acres and comprises not only the middle school campus, an assortment of five different buildings constructed over time, it also contains the school athletic and recreational fields, and the school district's administrative offices. The oldest of the buildings on site dates back to 1925 in its construction. It may seem odd that a school district is coming forward to seek approval of a special review use to operate a school at this location, when there's been one here for just short of 100 years. The reason has to do with several planned improvements happening to the school campus, and the funding mechanism the school district has opted to employ. Work has already begun on-site towards this project. Demolition of certain structures has commenced, and the construction of new facilities in pursuit of an improved design and layout on-site will begin later this year. Under Colorado revised statute, school districts are exempted from obtaining land use approvals through local government entities. This is because any potential school district can overlay multiple local government jurisdictions, and complying with the various regulations of each local government could become very confusing and onerous. Thus, school districts are not required under state law to obtain an SRU approval in this case. The reason the school district is requesting this approval is that a portion of the funding for this project is coming through a Building Excellent Schools Today, or BEST, grant. The State of Colorado agency that is issuing this grant has specified that the recipient must show that they are in compliance with local land use regulations in order to receive these funds. The underlying property has an R2 medium-density residential zoning. Under the requirements for R2, schools of any sort, from elementary schools up to colleges and universities, must obtain an SRU approval through the city. The applicant is therefore furnished staff with concept plans for the reconfigured school campus. In addition to the site plan concepts, the school district has submitted a subdivision exemption plan for this property, with the intent of unifying the balance of the middle school campus into three lots, and splitting off the school district's administrative offices into a separate fourth lot. Two structures which are currently situated on-site will remain, the existing gymnasium and the historic original school building. New construction will consist of additional classroom space and guest entrance, which will... classroom space and guest entrance, which will connect the two preserved historic buildings. Parking will be separated by function. A bus loading and unloading area will access the site and establish a wait line off North 12th Street. Any additional parking will be for middle school staff. Visitor and guest parking, as well as parent drop-off and pickup lanes, will be accommodated in a new lot which takes its access off of Main Street. The balance of the site will continue to be used for athletic and recreational activity fields. Finally, under the related subdivision exemption, the administrative offices at the northwest corner of Main Street and North 14th Street will be platted off onto a separate lot. Section 17.24.030a specifies three criteria for the evaluation of special review use requests. This is used in context with the purpose statement for SRU applications as stated in section 17.24.020, and that is to minimize conflicts in land use between permitted uses in a zone district and those uses which have characteristics which would negatively impact those permitted uses. Staff's analysis of six evaluative conditions associated with SRU applications, as specified in section 17.24.030b, reveals that 94 years of established precedent has indicated the use of the property as a middle school does not appear to indicate, to create a long-term negative impact to surrounding uses. Accordingly, staff finds that the three criteria specified in section 17.24.030a have been satisfied, and the SRU can be considered for approval. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the special use review request on September 25, 2019. Following the public hearing and Planning Commission's deliberations, a motion was made concerning the disposition of this request was made, seconded, and passed unanimously. Now, based on that motion, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that city council approve the Canyon City Middle School's special review use request with the adoption of ordinance 22, series of 2019. That would conclude my presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
I believe we have representative from the school district here?
I'm not seeing them. I probably messed you up a little bit, Patrick. I read the ordinance for trade and repair shops.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have an error on the agenda. So, 22 is the, ordinance 22 is this topic. So, you read the correct ordinance. It's incorrect on the agenda.
Okay, so, go forward. Any questions of Patrick? Mr. Meisner?
For Mr. Patrick and Mr. Ryan. So, what are their kind of conditions that we historically have dealt with at this level? Are we talking about for this action?
Well, this is a discretionary use under zoning, and we don't find that there are any conditions that are necessary for the approval of this conditional use. So, Patrick, am I not mistaken, this isn't allowed use within city for schools, but because of the grants, they're applying to satisfy a requirement of the grant.
So, we're not going to have any new memos next week, or?
No.
Those little things that?
No. This is very similar to an action the school district did last year with the elementary school in Washington, and there were no conditions attached to that either.
Okay, any other questions? Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 22, series of 2019, on first reading to permit the use of the property at 1215 Main Street as the location of a middle school.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gonzalez. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, are you going to vote?
It's a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Oh, well, why not? Okay.
Just like the mayor.
Just like the mayor. Thank you. So, what you're saying is our number 12, it should read as ordinance 23?
No, the ordinance numbers are correct. So, next item, number 13, is ordinance number 23 regarding trade and repair shops.
Okay. So, ordinance, I'm going to open a public hearing for ordinance number 23. It's an ordinance for City of Canyon City, amending section 17.08.010(c) of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning the Definition of Trade and Repair Shops. I believe this is you again, Patrick.
Yes, sir. I did not prepare a PowerPoint presentation for this because it's a fairly simple text amendment to a definition in our zoning code. The intent here is to modify the definition of trade and repair shop to include such artisanal craft-type uses as woodworking, or glassblowing, or furniture-making. And the idea behind this, because this is a permitted use in C Commercial and CB Central Business District, is that this could potentially, as a matter of economic development, help to fill some of the vacancies, particularly along Main Street, by making it absolutely clear that these are, in fact, permitted uses by definition. So, that is ultimately what our motivation here is. I am certainly happy to answer any questions, and I suspect since Mr. Stevens is the one who originally approached me about collaborating on getting this ordinance drafted and written to you, he probably has a few words to add as well.
Yeah. From my perspective, you know, within the Central Business District, we have prohibitions on manufacturing, but there are small tradespeople or artisans that their work could be perceived as manufacturing. So, this would allow that type of use in a downtown building. And, you know, if you think back to, you know, in history and what downtowns used to be, that's where a lot of the artisans used to be. And this is, you know, to try and bring some of that back and allow artisan craftsmanship in our downtown, and really help with economic development, and to allow those uses.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Mr. Meisner?
So, my concern is that we're adding, we're adding these different craftsmen, or however you would describe those, different positions. And there's not a more generic term that we can utilize that's going to get us in trouble? I mean, if a business wants to come in that's in that same artisan skills category, that's not one of those listed type, we're going to have to not allow them, right?
So, that is not an exhaustive list. It's only meant to be a guide to, you know, activities like these. So, that's why it says such as, a printer, electrician. So, it's not meant to be exhaustive. So, no. The answer to your question is no. Provided they fall within activities that are similar to that, they're going to fall under this definition.
My next question is countering that with metalworking. That, I think, we look at some of the sculptures downtown, and we think about an artist creating those. But would metalworking also include just a standard old welding shop?
I guess that's-
I would interpret metalworking as being not unlike an artist's studio. You're not repairing the bumper on a Ford. What you're doing is, in fact, crafting metal to some sort of an aesthetic purpose.
So, if I may add, that's, it's a distinction without a difference here. We already have trade and repair shops allowed. This is adding to that definition, the artisanal-
That's correct. It's clarifying that the artisanal uses are part of that definition.
Yes.
We also have other uses within CB and C General Commercial that deal with things like automobile repair and those kinds of things. And those would be categorized under special review uses and be perhaps a bit more heavily regulated.
What is, I think, is looked at as people will take our rules and regulations and look at them and maybe exclude themselves when they shouldn't have by making it more visible that they would be welcome downtown. It's just, to me, that's how I looked at it. And people do get those. They get our regulations, they read them, and they may be exclude themselves because they didn't see that in there.
So, you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. We do have a economic development prospect that does fit into this category, and we want to make sure that that is an allowed use as well.
Okay. Mr. Meisner?
Well, I seem to recall a couple of years ago where we had a manufacturing facility that involved metals on Main Street. And I realize what we're trying to say here, but I just get concerned about metalworking because according to Google, metalworking is the process of working with metals to create individual parts, assemblies, or large-scale structures. The term covers a wide range of work, from large ships and bridges to precise engine parts to delicate jewelry. My concern is, somebody could come downtown and create a different type of manufacturing facility under the metalworking allowed verbiage. And I don't, we don't need that headache again.
Right. And I think, you know, to address that, that's more of the artisan side of this equation, where we're looking at artisans being, you know, an owner with maybe a couple of employees or a handful of employees. I don't know if that addresses your concerns or not, but that's, you know, that's the intent.
You were here a couple of years ago.
I know. And I think that it's clear that this is of an artisanal type. How do you mess that up? Okay. I'm going to then close the public hearing and ask for a motion in a second.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a point of clarification?
Yes, you may.
Staff, Patrick, are you asking us to approve this draft and send it back to the Planning Commission, or are you asking us to approve this ordinance on first reading?
So, this was, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this item on the 25th, and they have recommended that council approve this. So, if you approve it on first reading, it will come back to you at second reading on November 4th.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hamrick. Go ahead.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Good.
That we approve a bill for ordinance number 23, series of 2019, on first reading.
Second.
Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please, quickly?
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
I hope this doesn't bite me, but I-
Thank you. Let's move on to number 15. This does not require, thank you, Patrick. This is not-
Thanks, Patrick.
This does not require a public hearing. This is a second reading, and it's, a second reading and adoption by Title Only of ordinance 19, series 2019, entitled, "An Ordnance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Sections 3.1, 2.020, and 3.1, 2.050 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Out-of-State Retailers Doing Business in Colorado." Mr. Stevens, would you care to expound on that?
We don't have any other details that we'd like to bring to the table. This is just the approval of the way fair ordinance that we discussed last time.
Okay. And so, at this point in time, the second reading, I would ask for any questions of council. I would ask for a motion in a second. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve ordinance number 19, series of 2019, on second reading.
Second.
Mr. Hamrick, thank you. Any questions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Okay. And, since it is a long evening, if this ordinance was in place, I would have probably been arrested, but-
Last night.
Okay. This is, doesn't require, this is a second reading and adoption by Title Only of ordinance 20, series 2019, entitled, "An Ordnance of the City of Canyon City, Repealing and Enacting Section 9.56.025 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Pertaining to Throwing Objects." Would you care again to expound that?
Again, we do not have any additional information we want to bring forward. This is the snowball and water balloon ordinance, for lack of a better term.
Okay, very good. Any questions of council? There are no, I'd like, we'll entertain a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the revision of ordinance number 9.56.025 on throwing objects.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any questions on, discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Thank you all. Number 17, and this is a second reading as well, second reading and adoption by Title Only of ordinance 21, series 2019, entitled, "An Ordnance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Section 3.1, 2.170 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Filing Fees, Tax Returns, and Payment of Sales Tax." Again, Mr. Stevens, would you care to expound on that, or?
No additional comments, sir.
Thank you so much. Any questions from council? Hearing seen none, I would ask for a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hamrick?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I approve, I move that we approve ordinance number 21, series of 2019, on second reading.
Second.
Ms. Hockes, thank you. Second. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Meisner?
Just a quick question, sir. So, what happens if I mail in my return? What are you going to do to it?
There comes Tammy. She's approaching. There she is.
Currently, those returns are being accepted. Once this goes into effect, we will notify all businesses that are filing sales tax that we will no longer accept those mailed-in returns. Our P.O. box, that is in Denver, where they're supposed to be sending in those returns, will be closed. So, I'm assuming at that point, it will be returned to the individual saying, "Box closed, no forwarding order." So, they will be returned to the individuals. You can come in and pay in person and file in person.
Or over the internet.
Or over the internet. That is correct, because it is, right now, the ordinance is written where it is mandatory online filing.
Yep.
Just put my card in my computer.
I'll take your card. Any other questions? I entertain a motion in a second, then.
Yep.
We already did.
We already did.
We did it?
We're ready to vote.
Oh, we were on the discussion. I'm getting punchy here. Would you call a roll, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Thank you all so much. Number 18, and the last item, as I can see on my rearranged schedule, is Canyon City Police Department Park Ranger Job Description and Program.
We're going to bring Officer Husky, Acting Commander Husky, up to-
Commander. You've been here so long, we promoted you.
To discuss.
I am acting commander.
You'll accept. Go ahead.
Sure. Basically, what we're looking at is creating two positions for park rangers. They'll, basically, they'll be doing normal police functions, but their focus will be in the city parks, the ones actually within the city limits and the outlying parks as well. And we get an average of 28,000 calls for service. So, this program could be filled from existing staffing. The salary that they're looking at, or that we're looking at, is that of a police recruit. They would have to be post-certified so that they can carry firearms and affect arrests.
So, I believe that, sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah. So, they're going to be limited post- Yep. So they're going to be limited post-certified, the same as a reserve officer, so that they would not have the full authority of a police officer. So they would assist with police officers in arrests.
Correct. As I said, they're basically going to be able to do most of what an officer does. Part of what they will be working specifically on are criminal and civil investigations of environmental-related crimes. Of the Colorado-by statutes in the municipal code, verified park permits have been requested and are valid for park use. If they are needing a uniform patrol officer to assist them, they can make that request. They'll be under the direct supervision of a patrol supervisor. And we're going to ask that they have a special knowledge of natural resource management and environment conservation for the benefit of the visitors and protection of our resources and facilities. Also, a knowledge of recreational activities of the user to include boating, fishing, hiking, camping, and others. We're going to ask they have a knowledge of wildlife, geology, environmental sciences, local and state history, and related subjects required for preparation and presentation of park interpretive programs. So basically, they're going to be available to help us with enforcement in the parks. They'll be a resource that the public can go to for information on a variety of things involving the outdoors.
A couple other notes here is we currently have 39 full-time sworn officers. This would be allocating two of those positions to park rangers. We've had, historically had trouble filling all 39 vacancies, and we see this as an opportunity to bring on additional resources to get to a full staffing level with a specific focus on the parks. We are receiving an average of seven to 10 calls per day that relate specifically to our parks. Every time that happens, we've got patrols, our fully sworn officers are spending time and resources in the parks, you know, addressing those calls when, you know, somebody in a park ranger capacity could potentially be answering those calls and keeping our sworn officers or fully post-certified officers in the community addressing other issues within the community.
Thank you. Mr. Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a couple of questions, and Ryan answered one of them. What are we going to do for vehicles for these people?
We already have vehicles.
That's not part of the new vehicle thing?
No.
And we talk about that these lower post-certification officers have to be under direct supervision. What does direct mean?
They have to be within radio communication of that supervisor.
So if they're not in the park chasing somebody, well, what are they going to do?
I think there's plenty of activity. We spent, and Officer Husky, you might be able to answer this better than I do, but if there's a call in Red Canyon or up at Royal, you know, the Royal Gorge Camping Park, you know, there's a lot of time that, you know, is spent traveling up to those locations. So we're currently spending a lot of officer time going back and forth to answer calls in some of these, the more remote parks, but just also just regular patrol of our regular city parks to try and keep down any illicit activities.
Mr. Hockes?
I got one question that might lead into another one. What duties would the park rangers not be able to facilitate? What are they going to be exempt from doing that a police officer can do?
Being as they are a reserve officer, basically, they have to be functioning with a sworn, fully-certified police officer.
Well, the reason I'm asking this is because if they can do everything else, as long as they're in the function with the supervisor, then I question, why don't we make them be post-certified instead of the secondary one? And my reason for asking that would be this. Why don't we just get them post-certified so whenever we have a opening in the police department that they can qualify for, they already got that post-certification? And then we don't have to worry about them getting into that spot, you know? We save part of the process of hiring another police officer if we make these folks post-certify also.
And I think in response to that, we, you know, Chief and I see this as a potential career ladder for somebody who can come in as a park ranger and eventually work up to a police officer. Or on the reverse side, somebody who might be ready for retirement or has retired but does not want to be a fully post-certified officer can function in this role and still have, you know, a post-officer career.
Well, I understand the reasoning, but, you know, the logic tells me let's make them post-certified even if we're going to get somebody. Why would somebody that's going to retire from the police department now all of a sudden say, "I'm not going to be a full-time police officer, but I want to be a park ranger," you know, and basically having the same responsibilities that he had when he was a police officer? I'm just saying, I think if we make them post-certified, that solves the problem in a sense if they want to apply for a full-time position. That's my opinion with regard to that. I can't see us saying, "Let's go to step one, but when we hire you, you're going to go to step two." Let's go to step two right away.
And we do have a former retired officer that is interested in coming back in this capacity.
So then are recreating positions for retired police officers?
No.
I don't want to see, well, you just said that. We have somebody who's there who'd like to come in. I don't want to get us into that point where we get these people, they're retired, and then we bring them back in on these positions here, okay? I just don't want to see that happen.
Why not?
Because there's other jobs that people that don't have a job can get. They're going to be retired. They're already getting a pension. Now they're going to come in and take this job that somebody who doesn't have a job can get? That's my reasoning for that.
Do they have experience and knowledge and they're qualified and they still want to be involved, but it's a wage that we can afford?
This is a little...
And also have new guys, it's like a working interview, and they can get their certification.
My only other comment, Councilmember Hockes, is we're currently having problems filling fully post-certified positions, and we're trying to find some alternatives here.
There again, I think that that might be a plan that we would like to see, possibly you and Chief Harvey would like to see, the step-up thing. Because I'm kind of leaning Frank's ways. They can come in that way, but maybe the expectation in a little while is to have them fully post-certified. Just my comment. And I'm not even up here. So Mr. Hammerick?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we say that this position will have knowledge of effective natural resource management, recreational activities, wildlife, geology, environmental sciences. Do we, my question is kind of on the other end of the spectrum. Do we expect this person to be like a federal park ranger where they give wildlife talks or something like that? I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious. That's an honest question. Do we expect the, maybe that's a question for the administrator?
I don't know that we've had that discussion. No.
I see that language in here, and so that's why I'm asking.
Right. We've modeled this off of, you know, some of the other programs like Grand Junction that have park rangers.
Okay. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Hockes had asked a question that I didn't see answered was, what are these guys not allowed to do? And then you answered with that they needed to be with, what can't they do?
If they have to physically arrest someone, they have to call for a regular patrol officer.
Okay, so they can't arrest?
They cannot make a physical arrest. Correct. They cannot make a physical arrest. They could issue summonses, just as our code enforcement officers or animal control officers do, but to actually take someone into custody or issue a state summons, they would have to have a regular patrol officer.
Mr. Hockes?
So it goes back to Red Canyon Park. He's got to arrest somebody. He can't arrest them, so now we got to bring a police officer from town all the way up there. It's like defeating the purpose in a sense. And this is, you know, I support the police department 100% and stuff like that, but I want common sense and logic to fill in with all the regards and stuff like that. And that kind of takes away from that because if we have that many calls for service, then eventually we're going to have officers going up to make arrests. And now we're getting them out of the city to go up there and do that. The purpose, I would think, is to avoid stuff like that. And then I still don't like the idea of people going, people are going to think, based on the statements that were made, what we're trying to create here.
And, you know, my comment to that would be, you know, the majority of calls to Red Canyon or Temple Canyon are not calls that typically involve arrests, which again, you know, if we can solve it with sending out somebody who, you know, can make that contact rather than taking an officer away from the city, that's the intent here.
Okay, then based on that comment, can we just hold this over? I want this to be done the proper way. Can we hold this over and have the police department give, come back with the information as to how many times they had to have a sworn police officer go to any of these parks to make an arrest?
I think that's a good point. That's very fair.
The answer is, I can. If council wants to do that, you do it by tabling.
Just a motion to table it?
Yeah, I think we should do that. I mean, that's to help everybody out. You know, come back with that information so when we do what we do, we know exactly kind of where we're at. I know it won't always be 100% accurate, but at least now you can come and say, out of all these calls, five times we had to send an officer up, you know, because there was an arrest involved.
I think there are two questions that are lingering. One is exactly what Mr. Hockes has said, that we probably do need some numbers to see it. And then the comparison between post-certified, non-post-certified, but pretty darn close, and possibly the understanding is that they would get post-certified. My preference, if you get a post-certified, why not? But maybe there are things I don't know, council doesn't know. Mr. Meisner?
Well, just quickly, to administration and to the police department, I get confused as to why you bring us some process that we've never seen and you bring it to a council meeting. We have other meetings that are intended to hash out these things, and it's not a council meeting.
Okay.
Can I add something for the police to review when they bring it back? And that is to have tasks and duties that will help alleviate the burdens of our police officers to do their jobs, what they need to be doing. And I think, I don't think giving lessons on geology or nature is really something that I'm interested in funding or supporting. It's more to help alleviate the burdens to the police officers and help keep our parks safe and clean.
Of course. So is it the will of council? Would someone like to motion that we table this and bring it back to maybe a general government meeting or something like that?
General government or something, and...
Well, that's our options. Those are our options.
Well, I don't recommend it come back to council. I mean, we don't have a plan together here, and this time...
Make the motion.
Do we have a motion to start with?
To table it.
Just a motion to table it?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we table...
Park ranger program?
Park ranger program and move it to a general government meeting, please.
Second?
Second meeting, second. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call her over?
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you, officer, for everything you've done. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, just mull it around. Let's get something going.
All right. So we're here at a, just anything else for the good or the, never mind. We're adjourned.